All please stand. Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in decisions we make today. Amen. We acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and pay our respect to elders past and present. Please be seated. I declare the meeting open and I remind all councillors of your obligations to declare material, personal interests and conflict of interests where relevant, and the requirement of such to remove yourself from the council chamber for debate and voting where applicable. Councillors, are there any apologies? There being none, I will now draw the council's attention to the motion of special appreciation. May I please have someone to move the resolution? Lord Mayor.
Okay, here we go. Good, got it. Mr Chair, that as this is the last meeting of the year, council notes and acknowledges the hard work and dedication of council officers and the contribution they have made during 2019 to help make Brisbane a better place to live, work and play.
Seconded. It's been moved by the Lord Mayor, seconded by councillor Cassidy, that as this is the last council meeting of the year, council notes and acknowledges the hard work and dedication of council officers and the contributions they have made during 2019 to help make Brisbane a better place to live, work and play. Is there any debate? The Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I want to start by wishing all of the council officers, right across the different branches and locations that they're working in, including the people that are out in the field right now, on a hot day like today, a very safe festive season and a Merry Christmas for them and their family. And I want to sincerely thank them for the work that they've done genuinely to build a better Brisbane. They make all of us proud and we have an incredible amount of respect here in this chamber for the work that our council officers do across so many different fields, across so many different areas and jobs and professions. And I know that that sentiment is shared by the people of Brisbane as well. We have an incredible amount of things going on in the city at any one time and one of my favourite parts of the job, other than citizenship ceremonies, is when we get to acknowledge the contribution that council officers have made, particularly the long-serving ones, who in many cases have made a 35, 40, 45-year or 50-year contribution to council, actually working as an employee for that long. And that is a very rare thing in many organisations these days, but council has a significant number of people who have worked for a long time in this organisation. Why? When you ask them, when you talk to them, there's a range of different responses, but I think a common theme always comes back to the fact that they feel like they're making a difference in their job. They're making a difference to Brisbane and they know that they're doing something worthwhile. And that is, I think, the reason we all do this job, but I know from every aspect of council, from every level of council, that is something that we all share. We are doing this because we want to make a difference and our council staff make all that possible. Now, we're in this chamber at that strategic level and we do help guide the city going forward and we help set the strategy, we help set the policies, we help approve projects and we deliver budgets, but in the end, none of that is possible in any way, shape or form without the loyal, dedicated, hard-working council staff that make those things possible. And so whether it's, you know, major projects like Brisbane Metro or the new green bridges, whether it's Victoria Park, or whether it is the ongoing daily work that council officers do maintaining the city, whether they're fixing potholes, whether they're out working with contractors to keep the grass cut, not that much of that is required right now, or to work with community and supporting groups across the range of different things, to make sure the trees are trimmed, to make sure all those basic things are done, that they do a fantastic job. Whether it's to provide advice to councillors on the range of different areas that we have an interest in and our community has an interest in, there is not a week that goes by when I don't receive positive feedback from the community about the work, not of just council officers in general, but individual council officers. I'm always receiving letters from the community where someone will have caught a bus and received excellent customer service, they may have been assisted by the bus operator, it may have just been a friendly engagement, and they write in and they say thank you. And I make sure that that council officer gets that feedback directly. And it's the same with our libraries and our call centre and every different area of council. So I want to thank them for the work that they do. This is an organisation that genuinely lives up to its motto, which is dedicated to a better Brisbane, and I know that each and every member of council staff is also dedicated to a better Brisbane.
Further speakers, councillor Cassidy.
Thank you very much, Chair. I rise to speak in support of this motion and put on record my appreciation, not only of the citywide staff within this organisation, Brisbane City Council, but also some of our local council officers that do an amazing job out in the outer northern suburbs of Brisbane. And this is, of course, in no particular order, I'll do it and certainly hope I don't miss any of them out, but there are a lot of people that make a huge contribution to our community. But this is, of course, a bittersweet time of year for us in here, it's our last council meeting before Christmas and I know we are bittersweet, maybe more bitter than sweet, maybe sometimes, maybe sometimes, but we are all here doing the job and doing it to the best of our ability to represent our communities and this is a vocation that sometimes has a negative connotation and sometimes we give each other a hard time, but I do firmly believe that if you're putting yourself out there for election, you do want to genuinely make a difference. And I'm sure that we are going to miss some of those LNP councillors after March 28 next year, Chair. But particularly, I want to thank the attendants here in City Hall that work particularly hard throughout the year to make our lives a bit easier in doing our job when we're here in City Hall. Billy, who's working as we speak right now, Chair, to Helma, Lucy, Melissa and Alina, we say thank you very much. To the committee clerks and the clerks that are here in the chamber are making sure that we are meeting all our obligations under the City of Brisbane Act in terms of how we're voting on things and how things are recorded, thank you very much for making council a lawful organisation. To our IT staff, Ed, who has recently left, who has made a big mark on many of us in the assistance that he has rendered us for many, many years, I remember Ed fondly from when I was a council employee and then when I was a councillor as well, and to Aaron and Billy, thank you very much. To council CEO, Colin Jensen here, please pass on our thanks to all the divisional managers and senior managers within council for the leadership they set and I would just like to run through and thank at a more local and personal level as the councillor for the Deegan Ward, some of those council officers who I said assist me greatly in my duties as a councillor for the Deegan Ward. And again, this is in no particular order, but I just want to let you all know that we appreciate your work very much. In city lighting, Andrew Gale, city projects office, and they're in different roles at the moment and have stepped up respectively, Deb Sketchley and Charlie Johnson, our festival and events liaison office, who have their work cut out for us in the Deegan Ward, we do an awful lot of events down there, Nicholas Mark and J D, thank you. Mosquito and Pest Services, again, have their work cut out for them in my ward in the outer northern suburbs, Darren Martin and Ivan, you do an amazing job. Our community development officer, Colleen Kelly, is at at least as many events that I go to and I suspect many more, I see her everywhere I go. Our asset services team, Rudy, Ricky, Peter and Alan, they have a very big task in the kind of assets that we have out there in terms of our waterways and open spaces and our arbiculture team, John Graham and Rowan, again, have their work cut out for them when it comes to the amount of leper trees we have in our community. Our parks team, we're getting into some big teams here, Ted, Steve, Chris, Rebecca, Karen, Brett, Marty and Tarny, thank you for keeping our community looking great. Active travel, we have two extra active travel schools in the Deegan Ward this year, which takes us to five. There's been some fierce competition among our local schools, thank you to Stacey and Lee for what you do. Our halls team, Judy, Von Wilson, Gemma, Nick, Sam, Rachel and Gloria, they look after some of the most fantastic facilities that we have in Brisbane out in the Deegan Ward. To our library teams at Zulmia and Sangate, thank you very much. The compliance team, the two Matthews, Matthew White and Matthew Thompson, Shane, Nicholas and Morgan, who have been a particular assistance lately on a very contentious local issue, thank you guys. Brad, Dave, Liam and Lara. Our TPO team, which has been under a lot of pressure lately in many, many changes that have been made to that team and they've been juggling this work amazingly well, Lucas, Simon, Michael, Matthew, the two Nicks, Nick Hurson, Nick de Brits and Melvin. And our waste team, Paul and Jen, Jean I should say, Paul and Jean, have been doing a lot of work with our community organisations, particularly War on Waste 4017, and are making a real difference on the ground with the community out there to have our local war on waste, which adds to what council, of course, does. And to our news branch team, Paul, Jenny and, or Paul Gaillier, Jenny and Paul Sanderson, we work very closely with them as well. And last but certainly not least, I want to thank my ward office and leader of the opposition's office staff, out in the ward office, wouldn't be able to do this job in any way, shape or form without the enormous support I get from Jen and Amanda and Tom, so thank you very, very much for everything you do, I appreciate it more than you can imagine. While the Lord Mayor and the administration have around 35 staff, at their disposal we have one as an opposition and to Scott Dixon, I say thank you. You are an amazing human being with superhuman abilities to get through what you need to in supporting the official opposition, the Labor team here in City Hall, so I say thank you very much and Merry Christmas to everyone.
Further speakers, councillor Moats.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I also rise to speak on this notice of appreciation for all the council officers for their work during 2019. I want to start by our previous regional manager, who was out here on South for us, which was Adrian Patterson, and I thank him, he was with us for the first part of our year and then he moved to the west and I'm sure he's enjoying his time out there. So we now have Tom McHugh looking after us here on the south side. So I'm speaking on behalf of the three LNP Southside councillors, myself, councillor Owen and councillor Huang. Look, the easiest thing for me to do was to get the list of everybody's names and positions from the local asset services team and potentially go through and read them all out, but pay particular mention to the ones that we have a great deal more to do with than others, obviously. So as I said, under the guidance of Tom McHugh. So there's Shirley Alana, Lisa, Maggie, Debbie Grimsley, Lyn Greg, Jamie, Archie, Elise, and then we come to Warwick and Mark and Frank. Now, they're three who we all have a lot to do with in the south side as far as our parks goes, they're the ones that deliver what we call the shiny baubles for us, that the residents love and that we love delivering. And also in that field is Barry, Dean and Kyle. We then go on to the arborists, we've got Anastasia and Dave, Jason, Edward and Adam, who also do a fabulous job, we have a lot to do with Anastasia as a leader and Dave Balisteros as working under her and how much work they do as far as their trees go. Natural environment, we've got Matt and then we've got Rob, we've got Rick, Anna Shearer, Andrew Wallace, now Kashmir, Sarkw and Luke and Alex all deal with the contracts and as the Lord Mayor mentioned, in particular our mowing contractors that keep everything looking shipshape. We've got Darren, Mark, Justin, Daniel, Peter Healy, Stephen, and obviously one of the ones we have a lot to do with in that space particularly is Mark Rhymers and Justin Wells. Justin is the beesnese as far as a council officer is concerned, he's always on top of his game and I want to personally thank him for all that he does for myself and my ward office. Then we've got Peter, Chris Mitchell and Cade, who are technical officers, who I don't have a lot to deal with other than Peter, and again, they all do a fabulous job. We then have all the staff that work in the acronyms, we've got the FLO, the CPO, the TPO, the CRU, the NEWS, the WARS, and the list goes on, all of those staff, we deal with them at all at some point or another and they do a fabulous job. Obviously the contact centre, we wouldn't be able to survive without you guys. Brisbane Square, there's a lot of you down there, there's also a lot in Green Square, the leasing team, the IT guys, and of course, last but not least, our City Hall staff and the guys, you guys here at City Chambers staff, so I want to say a massive thank you. You make our job so much easier than it would otherwise be and we enjoy working with you all and we thank you very much.
Further speakers, councillor Strong.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Listen, I'd like to speak on the motion of appreciation to council officers and staff. As all councillors know in here, if it wasn't for our fantastic team of officers and staff out there doing the work that we need them to do, we wouldn't look very favourably to our communities. This is my first, I'm just sort of finishing off my first term as councillor and it does take you a little time to get your head around all of what they do, right? And because it's sometimes, those issues can be one-offs or maybe don't happen on a regular cycle. So I just want to start off by acknowledging the meetings that I held at Fairfield with the asset services regional managers, we had two this year, Tom McHugh and Michael Hens. We sat down on two occasions over the last, this last year and just went through all the programmes that they undertake through their office. And the meetings went for probably one and one and a half hours and I was just really appreciative of them spending all that time sitting down with me and I'm sure they do that with other councils as well. Parks Regional South, Dean Middleton, Warwick Davies and Mark Gardner and Paul Javes, or Jade. You know, Forest Lake Ward has a large number of small and large park areas and the work that they do, that they undertake is just quite phenomenal really and they keep it all, you know, as good as anyone could keep it. I rarely have a complaint about any of my parks, if there's maybe one complaint a year, that'll be it. The waterways and drainage, of course, waterways specifically this year, of course, because of the issue with the lake, Chris Daly, who's undertaken that work recently with Peter Sitma and Bob Mullison to look after the restoration of the water quality in the lake and of course the Parkland precinct around it, huge job that they've got and early stages now is that people are giving me pretty good feedback in regards to they're quite happy with the fact that the lake doesn't smell anymore, which is a big one, and of course that that blue green algae has pretty much disappeared and the Ibis, can't forget the Ibis. They're almost down to a very small group now on Ibis Island, as it's called, as it's called by locals, Bin Chicken Island, as some would call it. Anyways, footpaths and Kerbin Channing, Peter Healy and Darren Nahen and Blake Henry. I'm always amazed how quickly that they, in my ward anyways, that they jump on, when we get a complaint in regards to a footpath, that they're pretty much on top of it. The occasional one gets through the cracks and we point that out and that does get scheduled at some stage. So I thank them for undertaking that work in my ward. The trees team, Dave Elasteros, Anastasia Brown and Jason Henderson. I've had the most dealings with Anastasia, of course, as others councillors on South Side have as well, and she was a wonderful addition to the council team. She is really good with our residents, our constituents. And leave her alone, we don't want her pinched. We want her to stay on the south side. So yeah, not Brisbane North, no. Anyways, council communications, Peter Owens, council facilities, Matt Trevor, again, a new addition this year for my ward, Matt Trevor, and he's really jumped on top of all those facility issues that had been festering for some little time, thank him for that. Bush Care and Nature Reserves, Paul Devine, who in my ward undertakes Brisbane Habitat and has been rolling out, trying to roll out a number of teams to deal, again, in and around the Forest Lakes suburb, those areas that flow into the lake, and he's been able to do some good work there. And litter prevention, of course, Paul Crusack, who, his litter prevention group has just been wonderful, as I've talked about him and his team for many a year now and it just keeps getting better and better. Transport planning and operations, Rajav Chandra, Nick de Brits, Karim Cedarham and Melvin Bow, Jack Henderson and Jared Cavallotti and Darren Sopa. Transport and planning and operations, of course, like through all wards, is a major issue when it comes to public safety and they undertake that work and I thank them for that. Council support team, Emily Blake and Darren Schumacher, who has, I just want to make special mention of those two because my ward advisor, Pam, really, they have given her a great deal of assistance over the last few years and there's nothing that's too much trouble, she rings up and it's reciprocated as well. If they need anything, she does it immediately. Pip Hall, who I've had some conversations over the last year, always very supportive when it came to a ward issue, which is terrific, it's nice to have that back up when you need it. And special mention again also to Connected Communities Grants team, Shirley Epps, who, again, my ward advisor, wanted me to make special mention of her because she just thinks she's terrific. Anyways, thank you Colin Jensen as being CEO and undertaking and having to keep track of all these fantastic Brisbane officers and team members. It's not an easy job and I just want to put my thanks out there as well for the work that you do on behalf of the people in my ward. Thank you.
Further speakers, councillor Hammond.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I rise to speak about the wonderful north side of Brisbane and I'm sure councillor Davis and councillor Lenders will fully appreciate the hard work that our council officers do on the north side. I'd like to thank the team on level two at Cherm Side there, Greg for his continuous hard work and time that he lends the three of us, Ted, where would our parks be without Ted, Wayne and John and Alan, thank you very much for your hard work. Alan at the contact centre desk, you are incredible, your wealth of knowledge and your patience and kindness with every single resident that comes past that desk is outstanding. And saying that, all the contact centre staff do an amazing job and I would like to thank them as well. Graham, Peter, Karen, Fleur, Colleen, thank you, you're always there to give us sound advice. Chris and Rebecca, of course, Kevin Chan, where would traffic management be without Kevin out there in the north side? Ben and Billy, thank you to all the north side team, I think I've mentioned most of them, if I haven't mentioned you by name, we certainly do appreciate the fact that you make our city look great. You continue to put the new footpaths in and for the men and women who are out there in this heat doing the Ashfelt and our footpaths, thank you, thank you, thank you. To the Cherm Side and Grange Library, I'll start with those two libraries first because they are the best. You always know when you walk into the Cherm Side and Grange Library, you get greeted with a smile and a hello. It is the most welcoming library, or both of them, to walk into. Both very different, Grange of course is small, more family orientated and Cherm Side, the largest council library outside the CBD, has a very different feel but very, very welcoming and I thank all the staffs there. Also the coffee, the coffee place downstairs, they certainly keep my staff and I full of caffeine, which is very much appreciated. Of course, the new Bracken Ridge Library, I'm sure the staff there are enjoying the new space and councillor Lenders, I'm sure when you walk into the library or you get comments from your residents of how welcoming our librarians are to every single person who walk through those doors. The Evan Park Library, a cute little older library but just as welcome and loved by the community, so I thank those staff as well. I'd like to also thank Darren and Emily, of course, without their help with our staff every single day it feels like and their guidance, it's very much appreciated. And Shirley, with your grant help, I'm sure, I'll send you a massive big thank you from Anthony in my office because I know that you speak to him quite a bit. Speaking about my ward office staff, thank you so much to Anthony, Dominic and Elizabeth. You put so much time and effort, your manner with the residents is outstanding, nothing's ever too much of a problem and you're always there to help and what's even better, you do it with a smile on your face. Thank you very much. I will note, you do guys do boss me around a little bit, but that's all right, I'll accept that. To Karen, Steph and Georgia in the city office, I'd like to say thank you very much for your hard work in keeping this city the cleanest, greenest, most sustainable city in Australia. To the Parks and Environment team in there, Andrea, thank you. Tim, where would I be without your guidance when I first stepped into this role? You have been an absolute godsend, thank you very much. Louise, thank you. Elizabeth Wade, Lachlan and Andrew, I'd like to do a very big special thank you for Andrew. He is a very talented council officer who designs our parks, he was out in Bradbury Park with me on the weekend and he does some outstanding work. Andrew, what I love about you is you think outside the square and you create spaces uniquely Brisbane or unique to the area in which you design, so thank you. We could not be the most sustainable carbon, largest carbon neutral organisation without our hardworking news team. You know who you are and thank you so much and I love the innovation that you always think of, of new ways that we can improve our city to keep us moving forward in the clean and green environment. Di and Kerry, ladies, thank you and probably a thank you from the Lord Mayor as well for all your help and hard work for the amazing Victoria Park, the new largest park that we are delivering for the people of Brisbane. It's been a challenge but we're getting there and we are going to be releasing very shortly the, what the views, put it all together for what the views of the residents across Brisbane have asked for the outstanding Victoria Park, I can't wait to share that with you all. But Merry Christmas to all the staff, to the clerks in here in this room for putting up with us every Tuesday, to the CEO and to your office for their guidance that they continuously give us. Merry Christmas to all and have a safe New Year and I hope you enjoy your break. Thank you.
Further speakers, councillor Johnston.
Yes, I rise to speak on the notified motion for the acknowledgement of council officers and the contribution they've made to 2019. And I'd like to start with the good news in the first instance. I would like to thank very much all of council's frontline staff. Certainly, I won't name them all as a lot of them have already been named by several councillors, but I particularly like to thank all of the on-the-ground officers and administrative staff at Asset Services South. They have a huge amount of work and they do a wonderful job with the resources they have available and I'll come back to that a little bit later. It was sad to see Adrian go as he'd been in that part of council for a very long time and we welcome Tom McHugh to the role. As I said last year to the CEO who is sitting here, moving offices around, as has been happening throughout the year, is disruptive, it is not good for the continuity of services and it would be helpful if we can retain senior staff without too much change through the year. I'd also like to thank all the library staff, both in the two libraries in my ward and also the one on my boundary, so that is Corinda and Fairfield. To Karen and Fung, thank you very much, we have a lot to do with the Fairfield Library, they're right next door to my office. they're right next door to my office. It is a wonderful space for everyone in Brisbane, our libraries are extraordinary resources, and we're very lucky to have them. I would also very much like to thank Robyn at the Annaly Library as well, even though she's on the wrong side of the road, she does a wonderful job with all of the staff there at the libraries and in other libraries around Brisbane. I would also very much like to thank the call centre staff, who do a really difficult job, we speak to them very regularly when we're out and about, and obviously they talk to our office regularly as well. I would like to thank them all very much for the service that they're providing to the citizens of Brisbane, because it is important that we retain this people-based customer service in Brisbane City Council, and I definitely want to see that continuing. I'd also like to thank the waste team, everybody through to the people who pick up our rubbish, through to those who do the special requests and problems solved for us, and that includes the people we see in the malls and on the streets doing the cleaning. I would also like to thank the active school travel team, I have had a lot to do with them over the 12 years I've been here, and this year, quite sadly, Lee Gamble has left, and I wish her every success in her new role in implementing the Queensland Walk Strategy with the state government. But as a CEO who is sitting here, I'll say, how on earth did you let such a capable and talented person go? It is absolutely ridiculous that somebody with that level of knowledge and experience in our council did not get a minor request of hers looked after, that we couldn't find a way to look after her, and she's gone, she's lost to us. State government snapped her up, and she's going to be delivering an important active travel programme for them. So I'd just say to this council that, when I started, there were almost 10,000 people working in council, and the last count I saw was just a tick over 7,000. The workload is not getting any less. Yes, you're outsourcing, and yes, technology helps, but there are simply not enough people on the ground to deliver the necessary services that is needed in our area. And Asset Services South is, in my view, the area where they desperately need help, they just need more people to be able to deliver on-the-ground services to residents. And I call on councillors, the CEO who is sitting here, to invest more in the service delivery needs of our city, and particularly in South Region. We can wait over a year for a footpath to be fixed. Council goes out and grinds the same footpath a year apart and tells me they fixed it, I go, no, that's what you did a year ago, you've still got to actually fix the footpath. So there is a real problem around resourcing and around the loss of smart people. I'm sure I'm leaving out some people here, but I would also like to thank my staff in my office, I think all of us know that it is really hard to do the job that we do. I also want to thank the IT staff at council, and I'll just say this, our computers do not work. The amount of emails I have sent to the CEO's office over the last, I don't know how many years, clearly the computers do not work, they'll break down for hours, the printers don't talk to the computers, the ACT crashes, things don't back up, the archives aren't available, if three computers are turned on at the same time, they don't work. So I too would like to thank James, Billy, Ed in his absence, also another experienced person, lost to council, and Aaron, for their work in helping just to keep the computers running in my office. It's a well-known problem, they know what the problem is, but no one can fix it, they've got no money to fix it, no authority to fix it, and it is hugely problematic. I would also just like to make mention of a couple of issues around planning, cars, and the traffic teams. There is clearly, in these areas of council, some problems with the way in which customer service activities are being undertaken, and liaison with councillors is being undertaken. And I have another example today, the Maruka, Better Business Whatever It Is, apparently includes your own Pili, but no one told me. So here is a major new council planning initiative that is being delivered in Maruka Ward and Tennyson Ward, and nobody thought to tell the councillor for Tennyson. I got invited to a breakfast a couple of weeks ago, and I said, what's this all about? It's in Maruka and Salisbury.
So councillor Johnston, I appreciate the point you're making, however, this is about thanking other people, not about talking about yourself, so could you, I just get to, just to be, at Christmas time, just be generous spirited, and thank the people who make, who do a great deal of effort to make your area the place that it is.
And I, we don't live in Stalinist Russia, so I am allowed to disagree with the motion as it is put forward, and I would like to put on the record that I have extreme concerns about the leadership of this council at the very highest levels, and the direction to staff to exclude councillors from matters that relate to their ward. Now, let me be clear, yesterday, the chairman of infrastructure apparently had no idea that council was recommending a feasibility study be undertaken in Tennyson Ward. I gather when he was questioned today, the Lord Mayor's flip-flopped, stabbed councillor McLaughlin in the back, and now says there is.
Again councillor Johnston, how is talking about what a fellow councillor knew or didn't know yesterday have any relevance to a notice of special appreciation for the efforts of council officers? Could you just bring it back to the substance, please?
Thank you. And my concern here is, the officers are recommending that this action be taken in Tennyson Ward. The people who are letting them down are sitting in this council chamber right now by ignoring the needs of our city and the recommendations of the council officers. So let me be clear, I do not believe that at the very top of this council, the leadership is taking our city in the right direction. I have extreme concerns that councillors are being excluded from local activities in their wards, notification about local activities in their wards, and that culture starts at the top with the CEO's office and the divisional managers, and that culture must change. So that is number one. Number two issue is the lack of resourcing. It is at crisis point in South Region. There is not enough money to fix the footpaths, there are not enough money to trim the trees, it's now a 12-month wait for tree trimming, 12 months. How is it that we can't trim trees within a reasonable period? You know, let alone just trying to get pedestrian ramps fixed, or, you know, a new bit of footpath, I mean, that takes a decade. So the lack of investment in South Region in my ward needs to be adjusted. So, back to my point, which is, the senior leadership of this council needs to better support our council officers with funding and resources to make sure that they can deliver on the services that our residents need. I don't blame them, I blame the leadership of this council. And every year I say this, and it just does not change, and I'm disappointed that it does not change, and I'm disappointed that again today, with a major council planning initiative, no one thought to tell me, I mean, no one thought to tell me it's in my ward. I mean, how does that happen? There's 26 of us, there's only 19 councillors, I say to the senior management of council, there are 26 councillors, not 19. The rest of us certainly need to know what's happening in our wards, and I don't appreciate being left out of discussions about major proposals in my ward. And it's not once, it's not twice, it is ongoing. That culture must change, and it must start with the CEO, he's sitting here today, and I know that he will simply ignore my concerns, because I write to him just about every week, second issue this week I've raised with him, about this very thing. I get council officers who tell me that they can't answer my questions.
Point of order, Chair.
Hang on councillor Murphy, councillor Johnston, your time's expired. Councillor Murphy? Further speakers, councillor Mackay.
And now for something completely different. I rise to speak on the notice of appreciation of council officers on behalf of the Brisbane West councillors. I thank those people who form the backbone of council, the hardworking council officers. While I will not today name individual officers, I will pay due tribute. I fear I cannot name everyone I need to, so I will take the more assured option of thanking the team. As great team players, I'm sure those officers will understand. Now, the average Queenslander might not really be aware of how their council operates, they may see council as a machine with unseen, faceless cogs working in the background, Chair, but those on the outside may not appreciate that the cogs in the machine are actually hardworking people keen to advance their city and the lives of the residents therein. Brisbane City Council is fortunate to have so many thousands of people dedicated to a better Brisbane. Take, for instance, the council officers who work diligently to resolve noise complaints, those residents who lose sleep because of barking dogs, gyms, and leaf blowers can be understandably irritable.
Councillor Johnston, you spent seven minutes talking about things that weren't on topic, please cease interjecting. Councillor Mackay.
Thanks, Chair. But with a considerate ear and an understanding temperament, we see council officers resolve issues professionally and emphatically. Let me be clear, council officers continue to deliver the basic services that residents expect and deserve, clerking, street sweeping, tree trimming, line marking, footpath maintaining, and cleaning stormwater gullies, answering calls, driving buses, reading to kids, laying asphalt, cleaning pools, weeding gardens, inspecting kitchens, registering dogs, and assisting with parking problems. Great efforts. Here's an example of another great effort, the record for fixing a pothole in Walter Taylor Ward is four hours from when the resident notified the ward office through to the hole being repaired. Four hours, how's that for dedication by council officers? And what about the senior transport network officer who attended a public meeting and calmly, methodically, and diligently explained a local area traffic management plan to concerned residents?
Councillor Johnston, this is a notice of special appreciation to thank officers at Christmas time for the efforts that they have done throughout the year. Please show some courtesy to other people. Councillor Mackay.
I'll just say that last bit again, Chair, just so it can be recorded. Methodically and diligently explained a local area traffic management plan to concerned residents, those people arrived concerned and left happy. That's the kind of effect Brisbane City Council officers seem to have on our neighbours. It's people working for people, people delivering for people, right? I pay tribute to all of the Brisbane City Council officers who are dedicated to making Brisbane better. Thank you to all of the incredible people at council, and a special mention to those committed officers who assist the people of Walter Taylor so resolutely. Thank you.
Further speakers, councillor Shree.
Thanks, Chair, I rise to speak on the motion before us. I won't name every council officer that I've had the pleasure of working with this year, but I do very sincerely want to thank all the council officers who've worked with my ward office and my staff for their hard work and dedication throughout the year. We have a lot of amazing people inside council, and it's a real pleasure to be able to work with them constructively on so many great projects. I also want to, in particular, thank my ward office staff, who are really amazing and do really good work, and go above and beyond what's required of them in their job descriptions. I also want to thank the council employees who work here in this chamber, I realise how challenging your jobs are, and that you have to put up with a lot of crap from those of us in this chamber, and I'm grateful for your patience and your support in this difficult I also just wanted to say to all the council officers out there, who may sometimes find your roles frustrating, that your work is really valued, and I know that, in particular, it can be difficult when you might put forward a good idea or a new proposal for an innovative project and find that it doesn't get up. I hear from time to time of great ideas that maybe don't get beyond the chair's desk, or don't get beyond upper management, or maybe they get as far as the EMC chamber but don't continue any further, and I realise that that can be really hard when you put a lot of work into proposals, and for one reason or another, they don't get taken up. But I wanted to encourage you to keep doing that. The work you're doing within the council administration is really positive and valuable, and it does make a big difference. There's, I can be, I find it frustrating, and I'm sure others do too, that when you have a risk averse administration that is maybe a little bit conservative or cautious about trying new ideas, it can be a bit trying when again and again you put forward these proposals and they don't get taken up. But I want you to know that it is valued, and encourage you to keep trying and keep persevering, because positive change takes many forms and comes through many pathways. And the many good people who are working within the council bureaucracy to affect positive change are doing extremely important work, and I want you to know that it's very much appreciated and very gratefully received, not just by myself, but by so many residents throughout Brisbane. I know this particular council administration has been the subject of a lot of criticism in recent times, and a lot of people are feeling frustrated with the BCC, but I also hope that the council officers know that by and large, that frustration is not directed at you as employees, but rather at the politicians who make bad decisions, and so hopefully you feel that your work is valued, and that, yeah, what you're doing is meaningful. Finally, I just want to wish all of you a very Merry Christmas. I hope everyone at least gets a few days with loved ones and family and friends, and that you have a good summer and a Happy New Year.
Further speakers, councillor Murphy.
Thank you very much, Chair, I rise to contribute to the debate on the motion of special appreciation on behalf of administration councillors in the eastern region, and it goes without saying, the eastern region is the best region in council, absolutely. Can I begin, I know other councillors have not named and shamed, but to me, that is the entire purpose of this exercise, is to name and shame, we want to call out the officers who have represented the very best of council over this calendar year, and who have rendered extraordinary service to the city in carrying out their duties. Can I just commence, and I have a few to get through, with Craig Welch from Asset Services East. Craig had a blood infection earlier this year, a very, very bad blood infection, the people at the hospital said he was about 30 minutes away from dying, actually, but all he wanted to do was go to work, and they actually had to turn him away and get him to the hospital. So that is a man who is truly dedicated to a better Brisbane, the fact that he almost passed away trying to execute his job for Brisbane in Asset Services East. Craig, the big fella as he's known, is appreciated by all councillors in the eastern region, we certainly love him and appreciate him, and we're very glad that he is still with us today. Chris Jamison as well, we appreciate all the great work that Chris Jamison does, he is an incredibly talented, effective, and innovative officer, who helps us get things done when it comes to roads drainage and our assets in the eastern area. Of course, Karen Sweeney and Brendan Whittaker in our parks in the eastern region, we've all spent a lot of time, probably more time than we wish, loitering in parks with these people, they are incredibly talented and good at what they do, and there's a reason that they have been in those roles for so long. I want to thank particularly Stacey Bennett from Creative Communities, who's assisted with many events that councils have held in the eastern region over the last few months, particularly as we lead into Christmas. I know for the Wakerly Carol, she's been incredibly amazing, and councillor Atwood and I are very thankful for the work that she's done there. I want to acknowledge Brenton Rollison, Rollo, the singer from Blow Hard, unfortunately, he passed away earlier this year during a gig. I know that councillor Cook is currently sponsoring a petition to have a park in Norman Park named after Rollo in his honour, I think that would be an amazing thing if that were to come off next year, councillor Cook, and we very much look forward to seeing the result of that petition. I also want to acknowledge his manager, Matt Boise, from Field Services Group, who actually came to the funeral and gave a eulogy, and he did an incredible job on behalf of everyone at council, and the words that he said so beautifully reflected the man who Rollo was, and I know he did counsel very proud that day. I also want to thank all of our librarians, particularly one by name, Jenny, the head librarian at Carandale. This year, we celebrated 40 years of Westfield Carandale, and I was able to pull out from the archives a picture of Jenny with councillor, the newly minted councillor Shrinna, opening the Carandale Library way back when, I think it was 99, and I could tell you what councillor Shrinna, Jenny hasn't aged a day, but you, on the other hand, Lord Mayor, yeah, looking worse for wear compared, the years in politics will do that to you though, won't they? It hasn't been mentioned, but I want to acknowledge a wonderful team at Brisbane Festival, although they aren't directly employed by council, CEO Charlie Cushion, our artistic director, Louise Bazina, did a tremendous job this year with Brisbane Festival, it was, I have had so many comments, so much feedback, all of us have, about the amazing display, all the artistic side of things, as well as the big day as well, River Fire, was so much appreciated, and we cannot wait to see their vision executed this year, sorry, next year I should say. Our cars team, Morgan Pratt, Georgia Foxcroft, special acknowledgement from the Our Cars team Morgan Pratt, Georgia Foxcroft, special acknowledgement from the eastern team this year, as well as Nathan Kelso from Parking Compliance and our RLO Bill Manners. Ross Griesley, he comes into our office quite regularly, he's our grass contractor for east region, he loves to chat and he's always very happy to cut your grass. To our hazard reduction teams, particularly those who've been doing work around Burbank, Chandler, the areas that are more forested in the east, in the last couple of months certainly we've seen in recent weeks just how important it is that we do that hazard reduction. Those teams draw people from all across council, they truly do an amazing job and they're very talented at fire management. So thank you to everyone in our hazard reduction teams. I also want to thank David Clark and the team at TPNO, we certainly work them to the bone. They are a very busy team, they do a great job getting all of our traffic and transport issues resolved. Ed Ridell, he was mentioned by someone before previously, Ed, this was Ed's last year in council. Ed also had quite a serious infection, was very lucky to get through that this year. Ed started with council when Campbell Newman was the Lord Mayor. And Ed went into the LMO one day to fix Campbell's BlackBerry and he was the only one who was actually able to fix the emails on Campbell's BlackBerry and so Campbell never let him out of the LMO. He stayed around doing IT support in the LMO for, you know, for the better part of two decades after that. He is an incredible servant to council and we're very sad to see him go, but we do wish him all the best with his new career. I want to congratulate Dr John Cowie, the head of LMAO, on his PhD this year. God knows it's hard enough doing a PhD, let alone while you work full time for council. Him and all his team in LMAO do a tremendous job with all the correspondence that comes into council and congratulations to him on that extraordinary achievement. I want to thank CEO Colin Jensen and Pip Hold from the Office of the Lord Mayor and CEO. It's not easy wrangling such an enormous organisation, let alone doing it while you've got 26 councillors to manage as well. So thank you for the work that you do. To our team in Brisbane City Legal Practice, James Langham, the city solicitor and all his team up there. It's not at all like Boston Legal, but they do do a tremendous job dealing with all the, particularly all the legislative compliance issues that have come up this year that we have had to deal with and that has been an extraordinary additional workload onto them. I also want to thank the Lord Mayor's Office, those opposite liken them to like a Spin City style team that's in there, but we know that from the Chief of Staff Chris Enstey all the way down, the people in the Lord Mayor's Office are dedicated to a better Brisbane as much as any other council officer and they cop a bad rap from some people in this place, but they do a tremendous job and they are dedicated to our city. Particularly I want to give a plaudit to our media team. It's only four people but they recently were mistaken by the leader of the opposition as being 140 people. So it goes to show they're doing something very right and they seem as being incredibly effective. I also want to thank you Chair, councillor Wines and the Clarks. You've seen government right at the coalface, I don't know whether that's a good or a bad thing, but you've certainly done a great job in chairing the meetings this year and thank you for that. I also want to thank all our ward staff in the eastern region, not only my own but for both wards that I've represented throughout this year, but also to all the other councillors. We couldn't do what we do without our ward staff and they are very much appreciated. And finally to, what I would say is the Staff of the Year in Brisbane City Council, my pick for Staff of the Year in Brisbane City Council, that's Colin Goldspink, Aaron Hancock, Stuart Campbell, Ella McIntosh, Kim Brennan, Brett Lester, Ben Tucker and Morgan Williams. And this of course is the sign shop this year. We've had six replacement LMP councillors this year, the sign shop has been incredibly busy, Chair, and they have done a great job in keeping up with that workload and making sure that all the signs are replaced. So well done to that team, we wish them well, have a very Merry Christmas to all council officers and we wish them to have a restful and relaxing time, we'll see them for an Action Pack 2020.
Further speakers? councillor Cook.
Thank you Mr Chair, I also rise to contribute to the motion of appreciation on behalf of the east region and the Morningside Ward. I also echo the comments of councillor Murphy and thank him for acknowledging those council officers who also work closely with me and my colleagues in the east. I also support his comments, the east region is certainly the best in my view. Can I firstly start by thanking my ward office staff Lynne and Troy who have done a fabulous job in supporting me this year as a relatively new councillor in this place, well on this side of the chamber anyway. Having the support of knowledgeable ward staff and also highly trained and capable council officers is something that has made the world of difference to me both personally and professionally and I thank them. Can I also thank the councillor support staff Pip, Emily, Mark, Darren Shirley, together with our CEO who I acknowledge his presence today, Mr Colin Jensen. Thank you for your time and assistance this year, it is greatly appreciated and we appreciate that your job is incredibly difficult. From IT, can I thank Aaron and Billy, again their knowledge and expertise, IT is certainly not my strong point and they do a fabulous job on their visits to the ward office and also supporting us here in the chamber. And to Ed, he will of course be missed, he was always a warm personality to have around and we will miss him here in the chamber. I also want to thank our asset services and parks teams, there are a lot in the east region, but particularly before him relocating to another region, Mick Marr did a fabulous job for us in east, Brendan Whittaker, Noel Lawrence, John and Karen, thank you. The development services team, we have had a very busy time this year in the Morningside Ward with one of the highest numbers of DAs in the city. I always appreciate the time and advice given by that team and particularly Joe McShane who has helped with some particularly contentious issues this year. In terms of TNO and TPO, I'd like to thank Debbie Sketchley, Nick Hurson, David Clark, Joanna who has now moved on, Melvin Lee with Active School Travel, as has been said, she was absolutely fabulous. We had some incredible results with the schools in my region under her guidance and she will be sorely missed. Can I also thank the offices in Waste and Recovery Services, our community facilities teams, in my view they are, they get my award for being one of the hardest working and bring community together, which is one of the most important aspects of our role as councillors. Particularly Glenn Smith, John Mackay, Miriam, you all do a fabulous job. Although not council officers or staff, to the media here each week, particularly Lucy Ellen Jack and for me locally, Brian at the South East Advertiser, thank you for shining the light on a range of issues both citywide and locally. We think you play a pretty important role here in the chamber and we thank you and thank you for putting up with us in our interesting ways. I want to wish all council officers in the east region a very Merry Christmas and also the councillors in this place and to you Lord Mayor, have a very safe and happy festive season.
Further speakers? councillor Griffiths.
Yes, thank you, thank you Miss Chair. I also rise for this motion of appreciation to the officers and I know that with Christmas fast approaching, I know that there's a lot of clearing at desks and there's people looking forward to their summer break. What I'd like to say for the officers are that while we have the debates and the political process here, they're really the brains and the problem solvers and the front line of council and the work that they do really makes all of us look good and it delivers services for the residents of Brisbane. And I think listening to everyone, that's certainly the theme right across the whole organisation and it's something that we should all be very proud of. There are a couple of things I'd, there are a couple of people I would like to say and I'm going to name the people because I know some of them watch and get a bit of, find it humorous sometimes watching this place in action. It's not necessarily these people but Tom McHugh and Mike Hines, Peter Sitma, Chris Daly, Justin Wells from Roden Joan each south, I know you do a fantastic job. Matt and Rob who look after Tuie Forest and our natural areas. Anastasia, David and the team from Tree Services South, you do a wonderful job. As does Warwick, Dean and Mark who look after our parks. Craig from Cars and Joseph Casabella, you've also contributed greatly to the south region over last year and I thank you for that. Matt Trevor who was mentioned before, you've been a great asset to Sport and Rec and helped in delivering some really consistent results in a job where we've had a lot of inconsistency over the place. Certainly also to our planning team Brendan Gillam, Kelly Hilton and Sean Cullinan's team who are looking after the neighbourhood plan. To Pat and Crystal who look after the litter strategy, you've done fantastic job. Transport and Traffic, I want to thank Deb Sketchley, Maria Gales, Kieran Imraj and the other members of the team for doing a wonderful job there. Shirley and Grants, Donna Bow who's our Community Development Officer, you work very strongly with local community and I really appreciate that. To the staff of our libraries, particularly Coopers Plains staff, thank you for the work you do. I think we mentioned the call centre staff, I know I deal with them almost daily and I think their efforts are outstanding in terms of conveying the amount of jobs that come through the area. To our bus drivers, I think that you probably missed today, but to the thousands of bus drivers out there, you're certainly the front line of our public transport services, thank you for the work you do. To the attendants in council and our kitchen staff, thank you for the work you do in cleaning up after us. To IT support, I'd also like to acknowledge my own staff, I have four of them, Lisa, Tracy, Sue and Cole, you've been with me a very long time and you're certainly the backbone of the service that I provide to the community out my way. Finally to Scott from, who works in the leaders' office, you do a great job, I think we do a great job with the amount of resourcing we have and the amount of ground we have to cover, so thank you Scott. Finally to Mr Jensen, Colin and to your sidekick Pip Hold, I think you have a hard job to straddle and you know it's, you work in political organisation and you're that interface, but thank you for the work that you do and for holding things together. I'd like to wish all staff Merry Christmas and a good break, thank you.
Further speakers? Lord Mayor? I'll now put the resolution, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
The contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, confirmation of minutes please.
Mr Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,610th meeting held on Tuesday the 26th of November 2019 be received, taken as read and confirmed.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Richards, seconded by councillor Marks, so the minutes of the 4,610th meeting of council held on the 26th of November 2019 be received, taken as read and confirmed. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
The contrary, no. The ayes have it.
Point of order.
Point of order councillor Johnston.
Yes, Mrs Chairman, I seek leave to move so much of standing orders to enable me to move the following urgency motion, that council, I move that council acts on the recommendation of the council traffic engineers to undertake a high level pre-feasibility study of a tunnel solution under Ipswich Road, Anneline.
Seconded.
I have an urgency resolution from councillor Johnston, seconded by councillor Griffiths. You'll have, the resolution is to seek the council officers to do a traffic study for Junction Road Anneline, Ipswich Road Anneline, excuse me. You have three minutes to urgency. Please limit your comments to the urgency and why it must be dealt with today. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Over the past two years Brisbane City Council has undertaken a number of transport related studies regarding the safety and efficiency of Ipswich Road through Anneline and surrounding suburbs including Maruka, Dutton Park and others. It's come to my attention in a review of the council files following a memo from council officers, that Brisbane City Council traffic engineers have recommended to council that they undertake a pre-feasibility study to look at a tunnel solution under Ipswich Road Anneline. Now in discussing this with my community, I know they are on board. For many, many years, Anneline residents have been seeking safety upgrades to Ipswich Road Anneline, including lowering the speed limit, pedestrian safety improvements, cycling improvements and better local traffic movements. And this council has done nothing.
Councillor Johnston, can you just bring it back to urgency please? So it's been a minute and you've been framing the issue rather than dealing with urgency, please come back to urgency.
And the reason it's so important we do this today is that when media representatives approached council about the recommendations by council's traffic engineers, they implied that I was not telling the truth, they implied that there was no such study, they implied that council was not or would never consider such a study.
I appreciate that, but again, this would be all relevant if the urgency were accepted, but what, but we...
And this is why it is urgent, because council's traffic engineers are recommending that this feasibility study be undertaken. The infrastructure chairman knows nothing about it and claims that I am misleading people. The Lord Mayor I understand tried to bat it away this morning. If the traffic engineers at council are saying that we should look at all options, including a whole range of other safety improvements for pedestrians, cyclists, local traffic through traffic, we should not be ruling out without any consideration. When did they make the decision to ignore the council officers' recommendations? Why did they ignore it without even discussing it?
Councillor Johnston, again, all substantive, not urgency. Please urgency.
And this is why, and this is why it is essential that we undertake this high level pre-feasibility study that the council officers recommended in September, that this council want to hide and not acknowledge, and it is essential, it is debated in this place and it is essential that this council undertakes the work that council officers have recommended be done, instead of trying to obfuscate, mislead and ignore the problems on Ipswich Road Anneline.
On the matter of urgency, all those in favour of urgency say aye.
Aye.
The contrary, no.
No.
The noes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Johnston and I heard a second voice, councillor Cumming. Ayes to my right, noes to my left, please ring the bells. Attendants, please close the bars. Clarks, please read the result.
Mr Chair, the noes have it, the voting being seven in favour and 20 against.
The noes have it, please return to your seats. Councillors, I draw to your attention the item of question time. Are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or a Chair of any standing committee? Councillor Davis.
Thank you Chair, my question is to the Chair of the Public and Active Transport and Economic and Tourism Development Committee councillor Adams. Deputy Mayor, with 2019 coming to a close, can you highlight how the Shrinna administration has supported public and active transport and economic and tourism development in Brisbane this year and what residents can look forward to being delivered in 2020? And is the councillor aware of any alternative plans for Brisbane residents?
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you Mr Chair and thank you councillor Davis for the question because Team Shrinna does have a clear vision for Brisbane and on this side of the chamber we know that Brisbane is built on our local economy. We know that 97% of all registered businesses in Brisbane are small businesses and that is why Team Shrinna is dedicated to making Brisbane the most business friendly city in Australia. We announced a range of initiatives this year to continue to deliver for the people of Brisbane. They included slashing business fees by $2 million to help small businesses thrive at a time when they need help the most. Already more than 1,200 businesses have benefited from those reductions to a tune of $400,000. The Lord Mayor's small business forums and workshops are held throughout the year and they continue to be a remarkable success. We've seen a 35% increase in attendance at these forums and we're consistently hearing the same thing. Small businesses want even more opportunities to network, to connect and to share their experiences. And on this side of the chamber, we listen and Team Shrinna has heard loud and clear. We are providing more opportunities for small businesses to connect at free events throughout the city. In 2020, we'll launch incentives to place startups in empty suburban shop fronts, creating more to see and do right across Brisbane. We will make sure more than ever before that we take opportunities where we can support our businesses in workshops, skill shots, work programs, meeting with our small business liaisons and meeting in our local development areas as well. And there is more to see and do than ever before in Brisbane and it's no surprise that tourism has been one of our biggest growth areas in the last couple of years. Our visitor economy is worth $7.8 billion and supports 600,000. Our visitor economy is worth $7.8 billion and supports 65,000 jobs. And our vision is for even more visitors staying even longer and spending even more. This year, we saw more than 500 operators, industry leaders and local councils join forces to develop the Visitor Economy Strategy 2031. And this has been led by our brilliant, fantastic Economic Development Board, Brisbane Marketing. And Brisbane Marketing has had an absolute blockbuster year this year. They've recently launched their stunning campaign, Nothing's Changed, Everything's Different, which is encouraging our locals to share Brisbane's compelling story with the world. Brisbane Marketing's major events calendar is set to inject $166 million into our local economy this year. And in 2020, the incredible Ring Cycle will arguably be the greatest opera ever written to round off the spectacular year right here in Brisbane. The Christmas program in Brisbane is set to welcome 75,000 visitors and breathe more than $70 million into our local economy. And Lord Mayor Adrian Shunah has made it clear that for Brisbane, we are the dedicated team that can deliver on that. And this includes a dedicated Economic Development Board, Brisbane Marketing. And I can hear the mumbling from the opposition on the other side. But what do you think they would be, the first thing they got rid of if they got their hands on to power in City Hall next year? Well, they've said it clearly before, BM, Brisbane Marketing, would be gone. We haven't heard anything about the vision for the future of the city, except Brisbane Marketing would be gone. So, a strong and diverse major events calendar, gone. More certainty and opportunity for Brisbane's small business, gone. A strategy to capture $6.5 billion in visitor expenditure, gone. There is no greater risk for the Brisbane economy than the Australian Labor Party. While that side of the chamber continues to throw mud, Team Shrinna is getting on with the job of delivering for the people of Brisbane. On the transport side of my portfolio, we've delivered a brand-new double-decker City Cat, a great addition to our river city for people to get home quicker and safer. We've got the preliminary business for the Kangaroo Point Bridge that showed us the bridge will continue to deliver dividends for Brisbane as our city grows. We have implemented free off-peak travel for seniors, which has seen nearly 30% increase in patroges across City Cats and buses. And has been a great way to see our seniors get out and about and explore the cities. Can the people of Brisbane expect Labor to manage a $3.1 billion budget? Let alone just come up with some ideas on how they would deliver for the people of Brisbane? No. No idea, no vision, no experience. Meanwhile, Team Shrinna has a strong plan with a vision that looks to the future. From business to bikeways, we are determined to make the Brisbane of tomorrow even better than the Brisbane of today.
Further questions? Councillor Cassidy.
Thank you very much, Chair. My question...
Point of order.
Point of order. Councillor Johnston?
No independent or green councillor got a question last week and it was some period of time the week before that. So why are you not allocating questions in accordance with the rules of procedure?
Questions are allocated with the rules of procedure. Councillor Cassidy.
Well, point of order, Mr Chairman.
Yes, councillor Johnston?
I believe it is time for either myself, and I think it's me, or councillor Sri to take a question in this place.
Thank you. Councillor Cassidy, please continue.
I would really appreciate a response to my point of order instead of just ignoring it.
I haven't ignored you. I've answered your question. Councillor Cassidy.
Point of order, Mr Chairman.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
I move dissent in your ruling. You're continually disenfranchising myself and councillor Sri in contrary to the rules of procedure under the meeting's local law.
Seconded.
I have a dissent, a motion moved by councillor Johnston, seconded by councillor Sri. All those in favour, say aye?
Aye.
The contrary, no?
No.
The noes have it. There is only one. Therefore, I will ask councillor Cassidy. Would you care to ask your question, please?
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, I was appalled to watch a widely shared online video in which an office holder of the Young LMP laughs along while a fellow member makes racist remarks about Indigenous Australians. The video had been posted to the Gold Coast Young LMP Facebook page. Will you join me in publicly condemning these racist actions in the strongest possible terms and ensure that the perpetrators play no part in the upcoming council election?
Lord Mayor, excuse me, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair, for the question. Thank you councillor Cassidy for the question. Look, I have already done that publicly when I was asked that question by the media this morning. And I was also appalled when I did get to see that video. This is something that I don't think anyone in this chamber would support. I don't think anyone here would support it. We have a clear record in this place of supporting a tolerant, diverse community. And we have a clear record of engaging and working with our Indigenous and Torres Strait Islander community members. And that will continue under my watch. And so I do condemn any such comments that were made. And I am aware that the LMP is taking action against the people involved. And that is the appropriate thing to do. Now, we have a very large party with, at the last count, more than 14,000 members across Queensland. It is, in fact, one of Australia's largest political parties, if not the largest. And so in that political party, there are all kinds of people with all different types of views. And that is the nature of Australian society as well. Having said that, I again state that I do not support any of the views that were expressed. And I certainly didn't support them being published in any way. So I think that's something we can all agree on. On a day like today, we should be instead thinking about the contribution that people like Uncle Sam Watson have made to our community. And we were all deeply saddened last week to learn that he passed away. It was on Monday that I learnt that he was very ill. And on Monday afternoon, I sent Sam and his family a get well card. And it was the following day that I had learnt that he passed away. And so we were all touched by that. And the tributes from around the community have been incredible. People all across Brisbane, from many different backgrounds, have come together to acknowledge the contribution of Uncle Sam Watson. And many people in the Indigenous community, like Uncle Sam, that have been making our city a better place and a place that acknowledges the really critical role that Indigenous community members play in our society. And working hard to make sure that reconciliation occurs. And these are the types of things that we should continue to focus on. Not just because it's the right thing to do, but because right now we should be redoubling our efforts to make sure that Uncle Sam's memory lives on in positive action. And I think that's the appropriate thing to do. I can say that on Friday, we will have a special service down at Musgrave Park for Uncle Sam. And on that day, we will be lighting up the city's assets, Victoria Bridge and Story Bridge in the Indigenous colours of yellow, red and black to acknowledge Uncle Sam's contribution and to remember him. And these are the sort of things, as I said, that we should be focusing on right now, rather than terrible divisive comments that will be made by a minority. And I again condemn those comments. And I appreciate that the LMP is taking appropriate action and strong action to deal with those.
Further questions? Councillor Huang.
Thank you, Mr Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Infrastructure Committee, councillor McLoughlin. Councillor McLoughlin, last week you provided a brief snapshot of some of the many council infrastructure upgrades being delivered to improve our road network and to improve safety for residents. Can you highlight today in more detail any projects to be delivered in 2020? And are you aware of any alternative that would prevent or would have prevented better outcomes?
Councillor McLoughlin.
Oh, thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you to councillor Huang for that question. Last week, I was indeed pleased to be able to provide that A to Z snapshot, detailing just some of the many traffic achievements that are underway or being delivered by Team Shrinna and the infrastructure portfolio so far this term. Your question goes though to what will be delivered in 2020 and what alternatives there may have been. I will return to the letter K for Kingsford Smith Drive and the upgrade that's underway for that corridor, which is one of our city's gateways to and from the port, Trade Coast, the airport and the state government's Hamilton, North Shore Hamilton Priority Development Area. As I've said before, in this place, the KSD works are crucial to taking infrastructure that was originally constructed in the 19th century when horse and cart travel prevailed and bringing it into the 21st century. Trade Coast is home to more than 60,000 employees and more than 1,500 businesses and is anticipated to be the second biggest job generator in the South East Queensland region behind Brisbane CBD. By 2030, the state government's PDA, the Priority Development Area at North Shore Hamilton is predicted to be home for approximately 15,000 residents and up to 10,000 people working in commercial and retail businesses. And combined with Trade Coast is expected to generate approximately 30,000 extra vehicle trips. So the state's Hamilton North Shore PDA is 304 hectares of what it promotes as a $5 billion developer's dream. They're selling the prospect of a forest of 30-storey-plus towers to be built by private developers on prime, state-owned, riverfront land. That's the grand plan. But the grand plan's to massively boost resident and worker numbers in the precinct, don't extend to credible plans to get those living and working there in and out. Paul Lucas, the Transport Minister at the time the PDA was declared, said it'd be by train, extending the Doomben Line into the North Shore Hamilton precinct. Well, that didn't happen. They now have some heroic predictions of shifting up to 450 people per hour by ferry. They'd need a fleet of eight vessels, each with a capacity of at least 150 passengers and a new ferry terminal running express services to and from the city. And I can predict confidently that that won't happen. The state government knows that the only way its $5 billion dream can work is through the road network. To capitalise on this PDA's access to the national highway network, the domestic and international markets afforded by its location in the Australian Trade Coast, Brisbane Airport, the Port of Brisbane and locally through the South East Queensland network via Kingsford Smith Drive. And, Mr Chair, the KSD upgrade is not just about ensuring increased capacity to cope with this extra traffic. Some of the oldest pipes and cables beneath KSD date back to 1895. Other underground services were hastily installed in the 1940s for wartime needs. This upgrade is delivering 21st-century services to meet the growing needs of this growing region. Some examples, the Cooksley Street drainage upgrade set a record for the deepest excavation on the project down 6.5 metres, some to two stories. To date, I'm advised that approximately five kilometres of water main has been installed and approximately 80 kilometres of conduit. And, Mr Chair, I would like to table this document which shows all the services that are under the ground. So as you're driving along KSD, think about all the services that are deeply buried under that road service. That's what this project is all about. Happy to table that document. The Connecting Brisbane paper, signed off by the state government, identified the need to connect North Shore Hamilton via on-road buses into the existing bus network. And there's been no other investment to provide for that other than the KSD project. In the past, Labor leaders, with a bit of guts and gusto, understood the need for the KSD upgrade and were prepared to say so. In 2008, the then ALP leader councillor Sutton wrote to developers and said that infrastructure needed to be delivered on KSD to deal with the congestion, to cope with the growth of North Shore Hamilton. In 2012, the then ALP leader councillor Milton Dick demanded that Kingsford Smith Drive be upgraded, describing it as a car park and a congestion hotspot. But then they flip-flopped, saying they wanted to rip up the contract and leave KSD from Brettswaff along the river untouched and in a woeful state. Mr Chair, the Australian Labor Party now says it would have been better for motorists to endure a road constructed for horse and cart traffic in the 19th century with cyclists and pedestrians condemned to share a narrow path tacked on to the side of the road.
Your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, my question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, it's been over one year since distinguished Annelie resident Dr Jeff Copeland was killed on Vener Road, Annelie. I have asked council to act. Jeff's family have personally asked you to act. And the Queensland Police Service have written to council asking them to act over 12 months ago. Why have you and council done nothing?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you, through you, Mr Chair. Thank you councillor Johnston for the question. The first thing I wanted to put on the record and make very clear is that the suggestion that somehow council does not care about the tragedy that happened, the implication that we do not care is simply untrue. Any loss of life on our road network, any loss of life across our city in this sort of situation is a tragedy. And I think all councillors would agree with that. So the suggestion that there has somehow not been action taken or that council doesn't care or that individuals don't care is simply not the case. Now, when it comes to accidents and tragic accidents like this, there is a very clear and well-established process that has to play out. And in particular, one of those factors is that the coroner investigates. Now, I understand, and my advice this morning was that the coroner has not yet completed their investigation or advised council of that investigation. Now, if anyone has evidence to the contrary, I'd be interested to see that. But that has been the advice that I was provided with this morning. So I would simply say with tragic accidents like this, it is appropriate that we take the advice of people like the coroner. Having said that though, we completed a safety assessment of the intersection of Vener Road, Frederick Street and Lagonda Street in November 2018. And this was passed on to the Queensland Police Service as part of their ongoing investigation. And we are awaiting the outcome of their accident investigation, which is the appropriate thing to do. But I do understand that the motorist involved has been charged with dangerous driving. And that was obviously one of the critical factors here. So when you have an accident like this, you have to look at what has contributed to the accident, what factors. And in this case, it was quite clearly, according to the police, and they wouldn't have charged someone without evidence, that the driver was driving dangerously and without care. And so that obviously is a big factor here. But we will absolutely take on any guidance by the coroner when that report is available. And we will continue to work on what we can do to improve safety. This is not necessarily a simple issue. And as I said, there are often many different contributing factors.
Councillor Johnston, please allow the Lord Mayor to answer your question.
Mr Chair, it is really disappointing that councillor Johnston will choose to use this tack. We had an opportunity this morning, this afternoon, at the beginning of the meeting to make a positive contribution and thank the council staff. And councillor Johnston's contribution left us all with a bitter taste in our mouth. And now we see this at the moment suggesting that council has done nothing yet. In her own newsletter, she's got a big front page article saying, "Action on Ipswich Road", and talks about what's happening to make safety improvements on Ipswich Road. Now, this is the fascinating thing here.
Councillor Johnston, I appreciate this is a very sensitive topic. However, please allow the Lord Mayor to answer your question in silence.
We heard councillor Johnston just interjecting that Ipswich Road and this issue were all the same. And then she said, "No, they're different." I'll tell you, they are all related because Vener Road connects with Ipswich Road. We all know that. We all know that. And council has done a citywide pedestrian safety review called Move Safe, which has resulted in a whole range of improvements to safety around the city and a whole range of changes. And we will continue to do practical things that we believe can help and make the environment safer for pedestrians and cyclists moving around the city.
Councillor Johnston, as I say, I appreciate this is a very sensitive topic for many involved. However, I must insist you allow the Lord Mayor to answer your question. Silence, please. Lord Mayor.
Let me read from the newsletter. One of the two promised council reviews has now been completed, the pedestrian road safety review. The other, the Ipswich Road corridor report relating to traffic is still to come. The review found that over the past five years, there have been 95 recorded crashes, nine involving pedestrians in the survey area, which is Ipswich Road between Annelie- Road and Cracknell Road. Some of the 27 recommendations council is considering includes, and lists these things here, a new green walk signal at the slip lane at Echaburn Road, improvements to footpaths and curb ramps, better pedestrian lighting, better signal phasing for cars and people movements, undertaking a speed limit review of the corridor, investigating closing side streets, changing side streets to left-in, left-out.
Further questions? Councillor Richards?
My question is to the Chair of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee, councillor Hammond. Councillor Hammond, with 2019 coming to a close, can you highlight how this administration has maintained a clean and green Brisbane, and what residents can look forward to being delivered in 2020, and are you aware of any alternative plans for Brisbane residents?
Councillor Hammond.
Thank you, councillor Richards, for the question, and I'd be delighted to answer that. In 2019, this administration has taken many steps towards creating a cleaner, greener, more sustainable city. In June this year, Lord Mayor Adrian Schrinner announced the Victoria Park Vision, Brisbane's biggest new park in 50 years, and we are busy developing the draft Victoria Vision based on what the community feedback, out of multiple community events that we held across this city. Council opened a number of new parks, the Milton Urban Common, and of course, the Ascot Park, councillor McLoughlin, which I am still very jealous of that park. We undertook consultation on the establishment and major upgrades to 11 new parks across our city. I look forward to coming back out to the residents in Brisbane to show them what their thoughts and what their plans for these new parks are. This year, the Lord Mayor also announced the Five New Green, sorry, the New Green Future Fund, sorry, a program that invests and protects the expanding green space. Council recently made its first purchase from the Green Future Fund at Sunnybank Hills. This administration made leaps and bounds towards the 750 hectare bushland acquisition project. I am happy to stand here today and say we are now up to 746.5 hectares that we have purchased on this side of the chamber in just three and a half years. We are fast reaching the 750 hectares promised, plus-plus. Council delivered three new river and recreational hubs at Dutton Park, New Farm and Mairee. This new infrastructure is providing Brisbane residents with more ways to enjoy our beautiful river. Construction's on the nature-based parkland commenced construction as part of the Oxley Creek Transformation. We also launched community consultation for the Archerfield Wetlands Precinct Plan and Graceville Riverside Parkland Precinct. I know, right? On that side of the chamber, we don't hear any "thank you, thank yous". They just be quiet when it's on their side. The Flood Resilience Home Pilot Program continued to expand in 2019, with selected homes in Wavel Heights and Camp Hill now included. Finally, the new Boondle Wetland Environment Centre, which will be officially opened on Sunday, with a family fun day planned from 8am to 1pm. There'll be a jazz band, face painting, geckos, of course, will be there, and guided walks or cycle experience if you would like. I had the privilege of going out there this morning to have a bit of a sneak peek, and I did fly with our migratory birds, Lord Mayor, I can't wait to see you do that on Sunday, and get dirty with the mud and the wetlands. It's a great educational facility for all of, for any kids, young or old, because I certainly did enjoy my time out there this morning. In January, the draft vision for Victoria Park will be released to the community for feedback, with the final vision to be released early 2020. The revitalization of Hanlon Park will commence early next year as part of the Norman Creek Master Plan. The Davis Park Improvement Project is expected to be completed in March, providing more accessible green space and recreational opportunities. In 2020, we look forward to progressing the major park enhancements and new parks that we have recently consulted the community about. Next year, we also plan to secure more bushland. Unlike Labor, who seem to only want to purchase land that the state government already own, so it's already in the ownership of the people of Brisbane, we are dedicated by privately-owned bushland to protect for future generations. To answer the last part of your question, I am unaware of any, unfortunately, any alternative plans from those opposite. In making our plans for our city...
Councillor Hammond, your time has expired. If there are further questions, councillor Cassidy.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order, councillor Shree.
Just to clarify, there's seven opposition councillors, so logically, the Labor councillors should get about five questions, and myself and councillor Johnston should get one each out of every seven questions. I understand last council meeting, there was only questions from the Labor councillors. So, that would be, they had four questions. And, no, they had five questions last week, they've already had one today, so they're up to six.
I understand what you're saying. However, I do keep a track of these things, and it is in my opinion that Labor are one question short of where they need to be at this point.
Sure, thank you, Mr Chair. I understand your opinion, but the fact is, they had five questions, and then they've already had one question a day, so they've had six questions, and councillor Johnston's had one, so that's seven questions.
I appreciate what you're saying, however, for me to comply with the law, it is my opinion that Labor must have this question.
I agree.
I'm really sorry. Point of order, Mr Chair. I'm sorry, because this is important, I just want you to clarify. Is it your understanding that, as a Greens councillor, I should have one question out of every seven questions which are given to the opposition councillors?
I'm saying that across this session, you are entitled to five questions.
Across this session, sorry.
That's right.
Across what session?
These last eight meetings, it is my view that you're entitled to five questions, and you have had five questions.
Across what session?
The last eight meetings.
No, it should be one in every seven questions.
It is, you're actually going at more than one in every seven, that's my point. You have got more and better service out of me than anyone over there. I am trying to correct that by giving the councillor...
Maybe we'll take the question offline later, I don't want to derail the meeting, but...
It is my opinion that you, among those seven, have been looked after the best by me, and I'm trying, I'm trying to be fair by giving the question to councillor Cassidy.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, yesterday, Labor's Lord Merrill candidate, Pat Condrin, vowed to ban sitting councillors, senior council executives, and their family members from being awarded secret Brisbane City Council contracts. Labor councillors believe this integrity reform is essential to this council upholding its own code of conduct, which lists accountability and transparency...
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
I am sorry. Mr Chairman, I refer you to the meeting's local law, section 33, subsection number three regarding question time. It says, "The chairman must", it's not discretionary, it's not open for interpretation, "must allocate questions alternatively, first to the majority councillors and then to the minority councillors." That means that they must go in order and be alternated so that we get questions on a pro-rata basis under section four. It says nothing about averaging them across sessions, it says it must be done alternatively to majority and then minority councillors. This is what the rules say. Why are you persisting with some other vague idea of doing it across a session, which we've just heard today for the first time, which is contrary to section 33, three, and four of the meeting's local law?
I disagree with you. It says quite clearly allocated pro-rata, and for them to be allocated pro-rata, then Labor must have this question.
Point of order, again, I draw your attention to section, subsection three. The chairman must allocate questions alternatively, first to the majority councillors and then to the minority councillors. Now, councillor Shree has pointed out that Labor have had five. It is then up to the minority councillors, councillor Shree and myself, to be offered a question, and you are not doing so in accordance with the rules.
Your understanding of the term majority and minority is incorrect. The majority councillor was councillor Richards, the minority councillor had a minority seven, and it must go alternate between the majority and the minority. That is how we ensure that there is a balance of questions between administration and not administration. Now, and you know full well that's how this law operates.
No, you don't.
No, 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 no. No, councillor Johnston, you have harassed chairman about this in a very aggressive fashion. They will be allocated pro-rata, 5-1-1, 5-1-1, pro-rata. That is exactly what I'm doing, and what I'm saying...
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order to you, councillor Shree.
I think it's just an error of fact, I'm not alleging that you've, it's simply the fact that you've now had more than five questions for Labor since I last had a question. So, you just acknowledge it's meant to be 5-1-1, but now what you've done is, we've had, this is the sixth Labor question, councillor Johnston's had a question, so I'm still waiting for my question.
I understand the point you're making, but as I said earlier, there were instances where the ratio of 5-1-1 didn't occur and it was in your favour, and that's what I'm saying. And to adjust that, to assure that section 33, three is properly adhered to, excuse me, 33, four is properly adhered to, I must offer this question to councillor Cassidy. What I'm saying is to satisfy pro-rata, I must offer this question to councillor Cassidy.
So, just to clarify for my understanding, I won't harp on about this any longer, but during each council meeting, essentially the order resets. It's not like at the start of the council meeting, you go back to Labor if the last question at the previous meeting was a Liberal question. So, we could have five LNP questions and four Labor questions, and then another five LNP questions. So, there's a clear precedent, please just hear me out.
I appreciate that, but here's the thing, councillor Shree, if I keep discussing this with you, it will mean there are only three opposition questions at this question.
I'm mindful of that.
And it is my firm opinion that because it's the last meeting, my preference would be to give the opposition group four, and so if...
Mr Chair, I move dissent in your ruling.
Okay, all right.
Second it.
A dissent motion has been moved by councillor Shree, seconded by councillor Johnston. All those who believe that I am incorrect, say aye, and the contrary, no.
No.
The noes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Shree and councillor Johnston. Attendants, please close the bars. Clerks, please read the result.
Mr Chair, the noes have it, the voting being two in favour, twenty against, and four abstentions.
The noes have it. Please return to your seats. Councillor Cassidy, you were asking a question.
Would you like me to start again, Chair?
Well, it's up to you, I suppose.
Okay. Labor councillors believe this integrity reform is essential to the council upholding its own code of conduct, which lists accountability and transparency among its fundamental ethical principles. Lord Mayor, will you now join Mr Condrin in scrapping these secret contracts?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you councillor Cassidy for the question. The last time you tried to go up this dry gully, I said to you, if you had concerns, pick up the phone and talk to the CEO, or indeed the CEO's office, and get any information that you need out of that. Now, when I checked at about 1.30, you hadn't done that. You hadn't done that. So, you're quite happy to continue to dish the dirt, throw the mud, but you actually haven't done the basic thing that you should have done if you had any genuine concerns. If there was any genuine concerns here, you would have actually picked up the phone. You know why he hasn't picked up the phone? Because he actually knows there's nothing to see here. He knows there's nothing to see here, just like there was nothing to see when councillor Mackay referred himself to the CCC, and Labor jumped in and said, "Oh, we better do it too", because they just want to throw the mud. They don't actually want to find the outcome of these matters because they know, as I said, it's a dry gully. But we've seen councillor Cassidy continue to raise what he calls integrity issues, yet on the day his own Lord Merrill candidate was selected after knifing the other candidate, he was asked by the media if he would declare his own register of interest and personal interests. And he didn't seem to know anything about that, and, you know, various weeks have gone past, and none of us are any of the wiser, yet this candidate and councillor Cassidy continues to throw mud at other people but won't disclose basic facts like, oh, maybe you're a lobbyist for a property developer or a lobbyist for a mining company, those sort of things won't be disclosed, yet, oh, it's on the public record, okay, it's on the public record apparently.
Councillor Cassidy, councillor Cassidy, you've asked, no, councillor Cassidy, please cease interjecting. You've asked a question, please allow it to be answered in silence.
The only reason councillor Cassidy and his Lord Merrill candidate are digging around here is because they have no agenda for the city. They have no plans, they have no policy, and they certainly don't have the experience to run Australia's largest council. And so, what they do is they try and smear by innuendo, but they actually don't want to find out the answers. They don't want to find out the answers, they won't do the simple things like picking up the phone to the CEO and say, "CEO, do you have any concerns about any of these contracts here? CEO, can I actually come and talk to you about this matter?" No. They won't do simple things like that. They won't do simple things like that, but they'll dish the dirt week after week with innuendo and smear.
Councillor, please allow the Lord Mayor to be heard in silence. Lord Mayor.
And so, we know what Labor's strategy is, and I predict there'll be plenty more of this. I think it was absolutely fascinating when the CCC wrote back to councillor Mackay and would have written back to Labor councillors as well, saying that they have had a look at the matter, councillor Mackay's self-referral, and the CCC is determined not to take any action in relation to this matter. What was councillor Cassidy's response? It wasn't, "Oh, sorry, I've tried to smear you unfairly", it's like, "I don't trust the CCC." This is what he said! Labor leader Jared Cassidy was unsatisfied with the result. Not for party political reasons, maybe, not for party political reasons, saying that he would seek a review of the decision from the CCC's Director of Integrity Services.
Councillor, allow the Lord Mayor to be heard in silence, please.
I think this is extraordinary, where you have a Labor politician having a crack at the CCC's Director of Integrity Services. The person that represents the party of Jackie Trad, of Lord Merrill candidates that are lobbyists for mining companies and property developers, the... lobbyists for mining companies and property developers, the, I mean, there are Labour politicians that currently sit in jail for integrity problems, the party of Paul Pasali, and they're trying to lecture us on integrity. The reality here is they have nothing to offer people of Brisbane, nothing to offer the people of Brisbane, other than smear and mud and innuendo, and the people of Brisbane are seeing right through it. The people of Brisbane rightly demand an alternative agenda from these people, not mudslinging, not digging the dirt, yet for some strange reason the leader of the opposition can't see this simple point. I'd be happy to engage in legitimate debate on the agenda for Brisbane, on the future of Brisbane, I'd be, I'd be happy.
Councillor, councillor Johnston, please allow, this is not relevant to you, please allow the Lord Mayor to be heard in silence, Lord Mayor.
I'd be happy to argue the pros and cons of various agendas and policies and plans for the future of our city, but if councillor Cassidy wants to keep going up these dry gullies, he'll find exactly what the CCC found, nothing.
Further questions, councillor Cunningham.
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Cassidy.
Thank you, Chair, I move, so much of standing orders be suspended to allow me to move the following urgency motion, that council bans key management personnel and their families from receiving council contracts.
Second it.
I have an urgency resolution from councillor Cassidy, seconded by councillor Cook, on topic of key management personnel contracts. Councillor Cassidy, you have three minutes of urgency, I must stress that the content of your presentation limit itself to the matter of urgency, councillor Cassidy.
Thank you, Chair. The Lord Mayor just made a statement and he said, here's a simple point, and he made his point, and I'd like to make a point on behalf of the people of Brisbane, Chair.
But councillor Cassidy, you don't get to-
The simple point that it is wrong-
You don't get to, that's not the point. If you get, if your urgency is successful, then you can make this speech, but please, as I've asked, please limit your comments to urgency.
It is urgent because after weeks and weeks and weeks, this Lord Mayor refuses to show leadership. So we have a situation where in the council's annual report, there is around eight hundred thousand dollars' worth of council contracts being awarded to key management personnel and their family members. Now, who are key management personnel, Chair? Who are they? They're LNP councillors and they're senior executives within this council and their family members who have intimate knowledge of the internal workings of this administration, what kind of work that needs to be done in here.
Councillor Cassidy, I must bring you back, you make the same urgency resolution every week, and I must insist, I must insist that you are very experienced at giving this presentation now, can you please talk about urgency?
It's urgent, Chair, because not one single LNP council wants to deal with this integrity mess that they've got us into. Now, these key management personnel and councillors have declared privately to the CEO's office that they have an interest in some of these council projects, but no one else knows what's going on inside council, no one else knows what's going on. The only, the only records that are coming out of the Lord Mayor's office-
Councillors, allow councillor Cassidy to be heard in silence, please.
No one in Brisbane knows what's going on. People deserve to know that their ratepayer money is not being misused, Chair, and we don't know that. We know, what we do know on that side of the chamber is they're all too willing to misuse ratepayers' money and the council code of conduct-
That's a, that's a, that's an assertion well outside the matter of urgency, I've asked to come back a number of times, why, why must it be dealt with right now?
Because people are sick and tired of finding out week after week that there's another rot going on with their ratepayers' money, that there are LNP councillors out there sending in invoices to the Lord Mayor's office and he's approving them.
Point of order.
Twenty thousand dollars at a time. Point of order to you Deputy Mayor.
I would like to remind councillor Cassidy that he does not have privilege in this place and he might like to bring it back to urgency.
Yeah, well, that, okay, everyone, everyone stop for a moment, please, thank you Deputy Mayor, I appreciate the point you're trying to make, however councillor Cassidy is a grown-up, he knows, or he should know the rules, that there is no privilege in this place, however, one rule that he keeps ignoring is my direction when he comes back to the substantive matter of his own resolution. I hear the interjection from councillor Strunk the last sitting, that would be relevant if this weren't moved every week. So can you please, why must, why now, and why must we do it right now, councillor Cassidy?
Point of order.
Point of order, Lord Mayor.
Mr Chair, I ask that councillor Cassidy withdraw his last statement, which is factually inaccurate and very defamatory, I believe.
Councillor Cassidy, I ask you to withdraw those comments.
So what was that, an interjection? Inchcliff did you say?
The claim that LNP councillors were sending in twenty thousand dollar invoices and demanding that they be paid, that is factually incorrect.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Councillor Cassidy, you've been asked to withdraw, please withdraw.
At your direction, Chair.
Point of order.
Thank you. Councillor Johnston?
Yeah, on what basis?
Can you say, I need you to say, point of order, and then I'll call you, all right?
I did say point of order.
Can you do it again for me?
How many times would you like me to say it?
Just once that I can hear.
Not the three times I've already said it? Point of order?
Yes, point of order to you councillor Johnston.
So, Mr Chairman, could you point me to the rule of procedure that says in this place that something has to be withdrawn if it is not factual?
I'm sure you know the rules, you like to tell everybody you know the rules as better, better than anyone else, I'm sure you know exactly where that is. Councillor Cassidy, you have forty-five seconds.
Point of order.
Councillor Johnston.
This is not a joke, you are responsible under the City of Brisbane Act to observe and enforce the rules of procedure. Now, my understanding, Mr Chairman, is that it is section twenty-one of the meeting's local law, and that there are a range of issues there that can be ruled out of order by you, it does not include something being factual.
Thank you councillor Johnston, I don't need, I don't need-
Well, apparently you do, because that's what you just said.
No, 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 thank you.
So please tell me the rule of procedure-
Councillor Cassidy, you have forty-five seconds.
Which rule of procedure-
Thank you, Chair. Council's code of conduct says that accountability and transparency are among, among the fundamental ethical principles of this organisation. This is not open and transparent, it needs to stop now. This organisation, this, sorry, this chamber, as the, as the representatives of the people of Brisbane in here, need to set the absolute highest standard when it comes to the use of ratepayers' money. These shady contracts, these secret contracts are not open and transparent, they are not ethical, and we must stop them.
I have an urgency resolution, all those in favour of the matter of urgency say aye.
Aye.
The contrary, no.
No.
The nos have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Cook. Eyes to my right, nos to my left, please ring the bells. Attendents, please close the bars. Clerks, please read the result.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being, sorry, the nos have it, the voting being seven in favour and twenty against.
The nos have it, please return to your seats. All right. Further questions, councillor Cunningham.
Thanks, Chair, my question is to the Chair of the Community Arts and Lifestyle Committee, councillor Matic. Councillor Matic, with 2019 coming to a close, can you highlight how the Shriner administration has given residents more to see and do, and what residents can look forward to being delivered in 2020? Is the councillor aware of any alternative plans for Brisbane residents?
Councillor Matic.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and I thank councillor Cunningham for the question and the opportunity to talk about the amazing amount of work that the Shriner administration has undertaken in delivering more to see and do across our city and focusing on our job of making sure that we deliver for the people of Brisbane. Now, Brisbane's amazing lifestyle has been further enhanced during 2019 with new pool and library openings, a brand-new world-class BMX track, millions of dollars shared through our grants programmes, and of course, our wonderful customer services team winning more national awards. And for the benefit of all councillors, Langlands Park Pool will be officially opened by the Lord Mayor this Saturday, strongly supported by the local councillor, councillor Cunningham. Mr Chairman, this Langlands Park Pool upgrade, for example, is an eight million dollar transformation, which includes an aqua park and an improvement of the existing pool facilities. That's a clear example of what this administration is focused on, in delivering for the, for the residents of Cooperu Ward, but also for the people of Brisbane. Now, Mr Chair, there are so many different outcomes that this Shriner administration has delivered within this program area that I'd like to break it up by the branches in order that we can properly make sure we don't miss any of it. Now, within the Connected Communities branch, council held the twenty-third Homeless Connect event on Thursday, the twenty-eighth of November, with more than three hundred and thirty volunteers. The event successfully supported more than six hundred and thirty guests. Now, Mr Chair, these events are pivotal to our city, and because they support the most vulnerable residents within our communities, and it gives them access to a range of free services including health checks, haircuts and meals. And I really want to acknowledge the work of the council officers in organising the event, but in also volunteering their time, and the many, many different organisations and government services that give so much to this event to make it so successful. Council also supported approximately a hundred and thirty festival events with more than, and literally millions of dollars investment within those. We had more than fourteen thousand eight hundred active and healthy sessions held in more than one hundred parks across Brisbane. The building's stronger communities grants closed with two hundred and seven grant submissions, which is fifty-one more than last year. To celebrate seniors' Week Eighty-Five community activities, including masterclasses for the Lord Mayor's, seniors' cabaret, the suburban concerts and workshop programme, and active and healthy events were held across the city. More than eight thousand one hundred and seventy seniors attended these events, and of course, we had the opening of the new BMX track at Dara. Our library services continue to go from strength to strength. As we all know, our libraries have become such great community hubs, with an extensive network of thirty-three branches, the mobile library and the pop-up library and the online services seven days a week, plus of course, the trial that we're currently running in Brisbane Square of extending the operating hours. We have approximately six point three million library visits. In June 2019, the Lord Mayor's Riders and Residents Programme continued to grow on previous years with more than nine thousand people attending events within that year. On Wednesday, the twenty-fifth of September, we, we saw the, with the extension of the library trial, we've seen successively now more and more people using the library, coming in and using this amazing facility and continuing to make it a success. And of course, with those library service improvements, we've seen the Tuwong Library refurbishment, the new Brackenridge Library and refurbishments at Ashgrove, Sandgate and Stone Corner libraries will also be completed by the end of this year. Within the customer service area, Mr Chairman, we all know the strength of our, of our call centre, and again, as I noted in the chamber a couple of weeks ago, the customer service centre run two categories within the recent 2019 AusConnect Association National Awards, for peak body for the call centre and also people's champion for the offices and supporting those offices that undertake that important work. And in community facilities and venues, the new aqua parks at Runcorn, the refreshments that occurred at Bell Bowery, of course, Langlands as I mentioned before, all of these different things working together, and of course, our community halls team acquired a new refurbished church at the new Rochedale Village development as part of an infrastructure agreement between Coles and council, and the Rochedale Community Hall opened on the nineteenth of October 2019. We of course had the missing persons memorial at Pinnaroo Cemetery, improvements to Mount Cravat Cemetery, a hundred and sixty thousand visitors to the Planetarium, a hundred and eighty-two thousand patrons to River Stage, and this is what we continue to deliver day upon day. Why? Because this administration is focused on delivering for the people of Brisbane, not about the politics that those opposite are focused on, Mr Chair.
Councillor Matic, your time has expired.
Thank you, Mr Chair.
And that concludes question time. Lord, oh, councillor Richards.
Hello, Chair. Mr Chair, I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for fifteen minutes, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
Second it.
I have a resolution moved by councillor Richards, seconded by councillor Marks, that this council now adjourn for a period of fifteen minutes for the purpose of afternoon tea, commencing when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
And the contrary, no. The ayes have it. And the contrary, no. The ayes have it.
The Establishment and Coordination Committee report of the 25th of November, please.
The councillors, excuse me, the Establishment and Coordination Committee report of the 25th of November, please.
Mr Chair, I move the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday 25th of November 2019 be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by the Lord Mayor, seconded by the Deputy Mayor, that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held, excuse me, on Monday the 25th of November 2019 be adopted. Is there any debate, Lord Mayor? Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chairman. Glad you heard me that time. Could I ask that items, where are we? E?
E.
Items. L?
L.
N?
M or N, N?
N for Nellie.
Yep.
So, E, L, N be taken seriatum for debate and voting purposes, please.
Okay, the room will note that items E, L and N, N for Nellie, will be taken separate for both debate and voting purposes. Lord Mayor, we will do the other items, the other items first, please. Lord Mayor, I will do your report, please, and items A to O less E, L and N.
Before I go on, I want to start by acknowledging that it's the Chair's birthday today.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, no, I appreciate it.
You don't look a day over forty-five.
Well, that's a little hurtful. It is my thirty-fifth birthday today.
Happy birthday, and as much as you would like to be somewhere else celebrating, we're glad you're with us.
There's nowhere I'd rather be than here with all of you.
I also, before I wanted to go on, table the annual report for the City of Brisbane Investment Corporation, so if Billy's around, I'd like to table that. Now, the City of Brisbane Investment Corporation, oh, thank you, does produce an annual report and it gives me a great honour to be able to table it this year in particular because for the very first time we have seen the dividends of the City of Brisbane Investment Corporation, and that's $20 million this year, going towards the Green Future Fund. And so it's a $20 million investment in the green future of our city, in particular the creation of more parks and sporting fields in various parts of Brisbane. And as we heard earlier, we've had the first acquisition go through in Chilton Street, Sunnybank Hills, and there will be many more to come, which is very exciting. But the City of Brisbane Investment Corporation was originally started up in, with a seed funding of $135 million. It is now, has a current value of $268 million. But on top of that, it has provided $131 million in dividends to council, which have been used to help keep rates low and to make sure that we fund important things around the city. So, going forward, we know that that will be the acquisition of green space and parkland, the creation of new parkland. And so I commend the City of Brisbane Investment Corporation and their board for another positive year. I can report that they had an overall return in the past 12 months of 11.2%, which is a great outcome. There's not too many funds that get that kind of return in these uncertain economic conditions that we're in. And if you consider inflation is very low, so getting an 11.2% return is a great outcome. And I look forward to seeing the continued success of that fund, which is really about funding the green future of our city. Before moving to the formal items here, I just did want to comment that it was really quite extraordinary that we saw another confected Labour Party stunt, which they'd, I really feel sorry for the Channel 7 people that came in and sat through all that for that flop of a stunt that they pulled. I mean, these people, they thought it was so urgent and so important and so secret that they didn't even bother to contact the CEO to find out the information that they'd been speculating about. They've had a full week since the last council to pick up the phone and ask the CEO, are there any concerns here? And in fact, you know what, even ask him if it's possible to view those records that you say are secret, because I think you'll find he'll say yes, no problem. As long as you don't breach people's private confidentiality, you can see those records. I'm sure that's what the CEO will say. And the only reason that they're not publicly released is to stop exactly what these people are trying to do, which is to smear people unfairly. Now, like I said before, I think there's a clear reason why councillor Cassidy didn't pick up the phone, because he knows it's a dry gully. It's a very dry, sandy gully, and there is nothing there, just like there was nothing there when it came to councillor Mackay. Labour councillors know this, but it won't stop them trying to smear people, it won't stop them manufacturing these issues. But I think everyone can see through it. And I think the poor Channel 7 cameraman and journalist that was here will rightly be pretty cranky that they had to sit through everything for that flop of a stunt. So, anyway, I think unfortunately we'll see more of this kind of thing. We'll see trumped-up, confected CCC referrals next year. Let me predict, there'll be a few of those. We've already seen them try and fail on a number of occasions. First, they went to the auditor general, remember that? They went to the auditor general about metro procurement. They're like, there needs to be an investigation into this, this is outrageous. Nothing to see here when the auditor general had a look at it. And then they went to the CCC only after councillor Mackay self-referred, and they thought, oh, we can't be hypocrites here, so we better actually refer him to, even though he's already referred himself. And when the CCC Director of Integrity Services came back with a response saying they're not taking any further action, that wasn't good enough for the Labour Party because it didn't suit their political narrative. And that is all it's about. It's about a political narrative. This is about things that, things that they want to make appear an issue, but are not. They want to smear people's good reputation unfairly because in Labour's grasp for power that we're seeing now, the desperate grasp for power, nothing is sacred. Nothing is sacred. Don't you dare get in the way of Labour's grasp for power. They will destroy reputations, they will smear not only councillors but relatives as well. They don't care, they're happy to smear because they have nothing to offer the people of Brisbane. It's sad, but like I said, I think we can predict more of this happening early next year. And as they get more and more desperate, and they're realising they're getting no traction whatsoever, they will become more and more desperate. And they will throw more and more mud, and they will try more desperately to smear. But I would simply give them this lesson in history. I will never forget the campaign that was run against Campbell Newman's family, Campbell's Webb. That disgusting, dishonest smear campaign against Campbell's family. Not just against him, but against his family. And then we saw on the eve of the election, the CCC had a look at it, and they said there's nothing. And I think it was the deputy premier at the time said, was it the premier? Yeah, it's either the premier or the deputy premier said, oh, well, no, we've got nothing. We've got nothing. And then we saw the backlash against Labour's smear that happened at that election. And so there is an important lesson in that, and I would suggest that the way to learn that lesson is to actually come up with some policies, to actually come up with an agenda. Let's have a talk about the future of the city. Let's not engage in that dishonest smear campaign. Before us, we have a number of important items. A, item A, another exciting one, which is the acquisition of 104 Ritchie Road, Polara, through the bushland acquisition programme. And this is a great outcome and further evidence that we, that we have done exactly what we promised we would do, and we're buying up bushland all across the city in key corridors, in strategic areas of importance to make sure that we keep Brisbane clean, green and livable. This property is just over 7.5 hectares. Now councillor Hammond, how many hectares did you say that we'd achieved earlier on in question time? 746.5. Now, we promised to buy 750 hectares. Now, does that figure include the one that we see before us? Well, there we go. There we go. We're getting very close. So, we deliver on our promises, and we promise to save and purchase 750 hectares of bushland in the four-year term. And we're on the cusp of doing that right now. The property owners contacted council to, to purchase the property, which was a great initiative on their part. And following an independent valuation, the purchase price was agreed on by both parties. The house that is currently on the land will be removed following the settlement. The land falls within the Blunder Creek Catchment and builds on council's commitment to preserving and investing in the habitat in this area. The parcel of land supports significant native vegetation and habitat for wildlife species, including koalas. Item B is the sale of a small slither of land in Lake Street Gaythorn that is surplus to council's needs. The land is 126 square metres. It's a strip of land that runs alongside one particular property. Under the City of Brisbane Act, council is required to go to market.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Already. Move, chief, extend. Seconded.
Extension's been moved by the deputy mayor, seconded by councillor Richards. All those in favour say aye?
Aye.
Contrary to no, the ayes have it, Lord Mayor.
So, under the City of Brisbane Act, council is generally required to go to market to sell property. However, there are certain instances where property can be sold to an adjacent landholder. And in this case, there are only two adjacent landholders or adjoining landholders, and only one adjoining landholder has expressed an interest at this stage to purchase. So, following endorsement today, council will approach both adjoining landowners with the option to purchase. And we trust councillors will support that decision going forward. Item C, the QTC credit review. I'm pleased to report that for the eighth year in a row, councillors again achieved a strong credit rating with a neutral outlook. Now, this is something that Labour will no doubt try to paint as some kind of negative thing. Now, this, this rating is not a C+. It's not even a B+. It's an A. It's a solid A. And you know what neutral means? You know what a neutral outlook means? It means that there are no foreseeable risks to council's ability to meet all of its financial commitments. That's what a neutral outlook means. So, this is an A. And Labour can talk all they like and try and talk it down. Their experts are talking things down, and talking our city down, and talking the financial position of this council down. But the Queensland Treasury Corporation does not agree, and they've once again awarded a strong credit rating with a neutral outlook, meaning there are no foreseeable risks to council's ability to meet all of our financial commitments. And so this, we are aware, is the strongest rating of any council in Queensland, and long may that continue to be the case. We are an administration that has had 15 balanced budgets in a row. And contrary to popular claim by the opposition, we're not legally required to have balanced budgets. We, we are not legally required to, but it is our practice because we believe in responsible financial management. We will continue to do that going forward. Now, item E was the first one that was separate. So, D is next, okay? Item D is the Significant Contracting Plan for the Provision of Electronic Security and Related Services. I probably won't go into too much detail on this one unless people really want me to. But currently, the contract that we have in place was a five-year contract with no option to extend. This contract covers four categories. Briefly, these are category one and two for the installation, service and maintenance of integrated electronic security systems, one less than $30,000 and one for more than $30,000. And category three and four for the supply and installation of open space CCTV and associated equipment. One for less than $30,000 and one for more than $30,000. Council officers have reviewed the categories and determined that the process can be refined for further efficiencies. To improve efficiency of the current arrangements, propose to have the following three categories. Category one is to be proposed for repairs, maintenance, supply and installation of council security equipment, including alarms, access control and CCTV cameras and systems. Category two is proposed for the service maintenance agreements, including the annual licensing and subscription fee. And category three is for access control and alarm systems to keep council's built assets safe. The corporate procurement agreement will be for initial term of three years with an option to extend for a period of up to two years for a maximum of five years. Council officers have advised me that they anticipate the release to market early next month, and following the tender process, a review by council officers, and the contract is expected to commence in September next year. So, we'll skip over item E, move on to item F. Council has currently multiple panel arrangements in place to procure traffic signal, lighting and road furniture. It's due to expire in May next year. The new procurement agreement seeks to create efficiencies for council and increase value for money by forming a panel arrangement with three categories to replace the multiple panels currently in use. Local benefits have been included in the evaluation criteria to support local suppliers with a weighting of 30% for categories one and two and 20% for category three. Stores board submission at item G is for the Significant Contracting Plan for Tires and Retreading. Council's current contract for the supply of these things is due to expire in the middle of next year, in July. This plan recommends that council transitions to the Local Buy Tire Contract, which is established by the Local Government Association of Queensland. LGAQ's Local Buy Tire Contract is a panel arrangement of local tyres suppliers that provides competitive pricing and includes a selection of local businesses based here in Brisbane. So, it's recommended that we go and move across to that LGAQ arrangement. Item H is the lease arrangement for the Carroll Park Swim Centre, which is a great outcome and has been a long time coming. The Carroll Park Swim Centre is located on the grounds of the Carroll Park State School. The facility includes a 25-metre pool, two waiting pools and an amenities building. It's owned by the Queensland Government's Department of Education, who leases the site to Brisbane City Council to manage on their behalf. Since 2001, 2002, Carroll Park Swim Centre has been operated on a series of short-term arrangements between the Department of Education council and an operator appointed by council. The current operator, or the less E, is Australian Call, who have operated the facility on a series of annual licence agreements since 2012, 2013. Under the current short-term agreement, students of the Carroll Park State School are granted limited access limited access to the venue during school-related activities. Council has long wanted to see a longer-term lease in place to give both us and the sub less E greater security of tenure. A longer-term lease will enable an operator to increase the level of activation at the site and invest in developing long-term programming, which will drive an increase in customers and revenue support from those customers as well. Would also enable an operator to assume more of the operational costs of the facility. To manage and operate the Carroll Park Swim Centre, it costs council approximately $147,000 per annum. It is anticipated that the proposed change in lease terms would not alter the current areas of responsibility for each party, but it's recommended that council approve a ten-year lease with the Queensland Government's Department of Education for this venue so that we can have that longer-term security. Item I is the lease of council land to community organisations. Council has identified 105 leases over part of council-owned land or controlled land and wishes to progress in accordance with council's standard lease terms and conditions. Each of these organisations has a lease that has expired or is due to expire prior to the end of next year. This submission will enable council officers to progress with lease negotiations, allowing each of the 105 leases to continue operating at the current premises, delivering important community, cultural and sport and recreation activities for the residents of Brisbane to enjoy. Relevant local councillors will be informed via email of council's intention to apply the exception and continue the lease negotiations with these organisations within their ward and look forward to councillor's support for this one going forward. Item J is the new lease for the Brisbane Powerhouse. The powerhouse has a current lease that expires on the 30th of June 2026. On the 10th of July 2019, powerhouse requested a longer-term lease to enable security of tenure and for the upgrade of existing premises on the site. The Brisbane Powerhouse is due to celebrate its 20th anniversary next year and commence a long-term vision for the future activation of the precinct. The new lease will be on similar terms to the existing registered lease. The repair and maintenance obligations of council and Brisbane Powerhouse will remain and will also include end-of-life replacement for key assets such as the lifts, air conditioning units within the buildings. The new lease will also include an additional licensed area to allow further activation of the powerhouse precinct for the benefit of community and visits to new farm.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Move for extension. Seconded.
Extension of time has been moved by the deputy mayor, seconded by councillor Richards. All those in favour say aye?
Aye.
Contrary, no? The ayes have it. Lord Mayor, please continue.
Thank you. The rent for the new lease will be on the same terms as the current registered lease and will increase annually for the duration of the lease term in accordance with the Consumer Price Index, except for the renegotiation dates, which will occur on the fifth anniversary of the commencement date. By supporting a new 20-year lease plus a five-year option, Brisbane Powerhouse will continue to be a long-term cultural and community arts venue for the benefit of the Brisbane community and visitors. Item K is the contracts and tendering report accepted by delegates for October 2019. As I have not done in the past, I'm not going to read through each individual item because the information has been provided there for you to have a look at. Item M is a rejection of claim for compensation with the Brisbane Metro project and particularly the Brisbane Metro proposed depot location at School Road. This particular land is at 71 School Road. In March this year, council took possession of this property when it was gazetted by the Department of Natural Resources and Mines. Since this time, we've been in negotiation with the property owner regarding compensation. At the request of the owner today, we are making an advance payment, the sum which has been endorsed by an independent land valuer. Two weeks ago, council resolved to acquire four additional properties to future-proof the Metro Depot and cater for expansion. With the Metro vehicles now locked in, we're able to fine-tune the requirements of the depot and will go to tender next year for its design and construction. This particular issue, just to clarify, while we have control of the site and we can get on with building the depot, the issue of compensation has yet to be resolved. We will move forward and resolve it in accordance with all of the state legislative requirements. But what happens is we effectively pay an advance payment, which is something that we both agree to. And then if there's any additional compensation to be paid down the track based on further negotiations, then we'll make that decision at the time. But in the meantime, they will get a substantial sum as an upfront payment, which will obviously help them financially as we continue to negotiate a final outcome here. And finally, item O, which wouldn't be a surprise to anyone, was mentioned last week, is the reduction in councillor superannuation from 20% down to 12% as recommended by the Independent Remuneration Tribunal. So this is what's been recommended by the tribunal and we are now implementing their recommendation.
Further speakers, councillor Cassidy.
Thank you, Chair. Just running down this list and avoiding those that have been taken surrey Adam, I'll go through that. But just in terms of voting on this lot, can I just ask that item J and K be taken separate for voting just in this lot? Together, yeah.
Okay, so just for the interest of the room, E, L and N remain separate and we will vote for J and K together at the conclusion of this first debate. Councillor Cassidy.
Thank you. In terms of item A, the purchase of land for environmental purposes at 104 Ritchie Road Palara, we support this item and support the purchase of bushland when it is genuine, unlike the political purchase of the Save Council Adams block at Marycavat East. Previously, this does seem to be a genuine purchase of genuine bushland, which has genuine environmental and ecological values. So we are happy to support this item. That's a bit of a change, yeah, when we see an item like this. Item B, this very small parcel of land at 70A Laid Street Gaythorn, running alongside a property which, according to the papers provided, seems to be largely unusable in any way, shape or form to council. It does seem to form part of this block by the looks of it. So given it will be unusable for anything else on balance, we think this is probably okay and we'll support this item. Item C, Lord Mayor spoke at some length about the QTC 2019 City Council Credit Review and given that it is only a neutral outlook, there is certainly room for improvement here. What we do know, looking at previous budgets and the forward estimates for this council that the LMP have loaded, many generations of ratepayers up with enormous mountains of debt to fund projects like the White Elephant that has become Kingston Smith Drive. You know, the lord mayors and chairs walk around cash and $4 million in political advertising. QTC identified the council as only strong with a neutral outlook because of the large rate space and we know that the LMP will jack those rates up to cover for their enormous waste and cost overruns and cost blowouts. Up to 23% in some suburbs over this term of the LMP administration have been subsidising this council's waste. We know that those cost overruns on projects like Kingston Smith Drive, on the IT project that have wasted $27 million, the $200 million cost overrun on Metro already adds to this and will inevitably lead to rates increases under this administration. Item D, yes, D, Significant Contracting Plan for Provision of Electrical Security and Related Services. It's a small corporate procurement arrangement. Again, though, I'd probably question the need for the significant amount of secrecy in the allocation of these funds against those different weightings there. There is a smaller-than-usual local benefit in this project, so some explanation on that would be appreciated, but otherwise we will be supporting this project. Skipping over E to F, which is the Significant Contracting Plan for Traffic Signal Lighting and Road Furniture, obviously important things for council to have and to deploy, so we'll be supporting this item. Item G, the Plan for Tyres and Retreading. Of course, retreading where it's appropriate is a good idea in terms of recycling and we have a significant fleet, obviously, of trucks and vehicles and buses, so we'll be supporting this item going ahead. The lease for the Carroll Park Swim Centre, item H, will be supporting this item, being such a small pool for a growing community out there in the southwestern suburbs. This does continue, I think, to add weight to councillor Strunk's call for better services in terms of providing pools for his community, but we'll be supporting the lease arrangement nonetheless going forward. Item I is the leases of council land to community organisations and this is obviously a requirement now that these come to full council for our consideration and we support these leases going to these organisations and I'm sure other councillors will speak on specifics. I note there are a couple of local scout leases there for me, which I wholeheartedly support. Item J, which is the lease to Brisbane Powerhouse. And this, obviously, Brisbane Powerhouse is a wonderful legacy of the Sawley Labour administration of the 1990s and early 2000s chair. It's become a cultural icon of the city, somewhere where you could see on one night Eric Idle and then another community theatre or something like that, although it certainly used to be the case. It certainly used to be the case at the Brisbane Powerhouse. But what we're seeing is the increasing commercialisation and corporatisation of council's public assets. We see that at places like King George Square, which should be the People's Square, it is now the highest bidders square. We're seeing that increasingly at the Brisbane Powerhouse now. And this lease, which will be a 25-year lease in its entirety, will inevitably, as it has increasingly, lead to less time and space for genuine community access to this space and more commercial spaces within the Brisbane Powerhouse. And the LMP, of course, have significant form when it comes to that commercialisation of public spaces. So we do have some concerns around that item. Item K is contracts and tendering and do have a couple of questions around that and some comments to make. Item number one, the construction of the Bill Brown Reserve Sports Park Extension. This is something that I support locally. It's just over the boundary in the Brackenridge Ward, but it will service a fantastic local club, the St. George Hawks Netball Club, which has been a club that has a very proud history of netball in our community and a club that has been without facilities for a very, very long time and they have had exponential growth over the last few years, even in the face of not having a training facility or a facility where they can host and play games. So this is certainly very welcome for them and something that I've been advocating for within council for the last few years. Just on item seven, the Sports Fields and Hard Court Remediation Programme, I certainly support this in that O'Callaghan Park at Zulmia will finally be getting a new field upgrade there, except the first two on this list, which is O'Callaghan Park and Mitchelton at Gaythorn, have no figures next to them. The other ones, Bell Bowery and Gendalee, do have costings against them, so I'm not sure why that is, nonetheless we are supporting those. But some explanation would be great. And in Transport for Brisbane, contract number 13, there's quite an odd contract there, which is for Public Transport Business Solution for Gyro Incorporated, Le Group En Informatique En Recher Operationnel. And everything else is commercial and confidence. There is no explanation whatsoever. There is no information on what this contract is for. When it came to the small strip of land that we talked about in item B, there was 51 pages on that of information and yet on this contract number 13 here, which there is no value against the side of for the people of Brisbane to see, there is no information whatsoever. So some further information on that would be greatly appreciated, please. Item M now, L is separate, yes, item M.
M's included today and this my item. Please proceed on M, yes.
Oh, yes, M. So this is the Brisbane Metro Project Relocation Claim for Compensation. Again, given the mismanagement of this project, the Metro, these people who are having their land resumed and are making claim have seen this administration coming a mile away and we've seen that week after week when it comes to compensation being paid for properties being resumed. We will, however, be supporting this item because we don't want this project to blow out any further than the $200 million it already has. We think council does need to stick to its guns. We can't afford to lose another cent on this project. Item O, skipping over, which is the Adjustment of Council Superannuation. Now, we, of course, support this item. The LMP were dragged kicking and screaming.
Excuse me, councillor Cassidy, your time has expired.
Point of order, move an extension, Mr Chair.
Second. An extension of time moved by councillor Cook and seconded by councillor Strunk. All those in favour say aye?
Aye.
The contrary, no? The ayes have it.
Thank you, Chair. Won't take long, but this item is important. The LMP were dragged kicking and screaming to the table on this item by Pat Condrin. The Lord Mayor's stock standard response, the Lord Mayor's stocks, whenever these issues come up, the Lord Mayor's stock standard response is that it's someone else's fault. It's Jim Sawley's fault or it's the Labor State Government's fault or it's someone else's fault. He's been in this chamber since 2005 after replacing the previous council there, mentored by Campbell Newman in this place. So he's been here a long time. He's been in this chamber a long time and his response is that, no, this is all someone else's fault. This Lord Mayor has never had the opportunity to clean up any of these messes over the last 16 years of being in power. That is his stock standard response. As he goes beyond blaming Jim Sawley and the current Labor State Government, he often blames previous Labor State Governments, always glosses over the Newman State Government, who was there for the shortest amount of time. It'll be on to Clem Jones, although Graham Quirk did use to blame him from time to time for different things and perhaps he will go back to William Jolly and blame him for something in this city as well, while saying, oh, I've just come in to fix all this mess, even though he's been here for 14 years and been in administration for that entire time. So while, yes, we support this and we said last week we would be supporting this item coming through to bring us more in line with what those community expectations are of our superannuation entitlements, something that the Lord Mayor wouldn't deal with and continues to refuse to deal with, Chair, is the outrageous rort that is the walk-around money worth $240,000 a year to the ratepayers of Brisbane. The Lord Mayor has had the opportunity for successive weeks and successive weeks.
Councillor Cassidy, can I just ask you to come back to the topic for me? Just the resolution here is strictly about superannuation.
Yeah, so this is a result of the Independent Remuneration Tribunal's report that was convened and at the time, the Lord Mayor was given the option and the opportunity for the remuneration tribunal, which is looking at superannuation and all of the pay and conditions, as it were, of councillors, to give them, set them a task to say that paying cash into the bank account, the private bank accounts of politicians was wrong and it should stop. And the Lord Mayor, again, at that opportunity and at every opportunity, has refused to show leadership when it comes to that. So we'll be supporting the Adjustment of Council Superannuation Contributions, but once again, say shame on the Lord Mayor for choosing to keep cash in his pocket instead of having an accountable system to the ratepayers of Brisbane.
Further speakers? Councillor Hammond.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I rise to speak.
Thank you, Mr Chair, I rise, um, to speak on item A, but wow, that is another example of just negative politics, this is politics for politics sake, they have no vision over there, they don't care about the ratepayers of Brisbane, they have no vision, all they do is come in here and whinge and whine.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Yeah, councillor Strunk.
Yeah, could you bring the, uh, speaker back to the, um...
I will, I will, I was just keeping an eye on the clock, um, but yes, I think, um, councillor Hammond, can I ask you to please identify the items to which you was, to you will be speaking?
Item A, I never ceases to amaze me though, Mr Chair, how negative and no vision they have on the other side. I would like to speak positively about this side's, um, vision for our city. Item A comes in that we are purchasing again seven point five-two-seven-one hectares at one oh four Richie Road, Polara, for four point seven million through the bushland acquisition. This brings us up to, what did we promise? We promised on this side of the chamber in four years that we would purchase seven hundred and fifty, but with this new block of land, beautiful wildlife corridor at Polara, brings us up to seven hundred and fifty-four point zero-two-seven-one hectares of bushland that is now protected. This side of the chamber will continue to invest at at-risk bushland that is privately owned, we will not step in and bail out the state government because they want to sell off land, the state government's land that those opposite always go on about is already protected because it is owned by the people of Queensland, it doesn't need to be sold off, we are more interested in buying that land that is at risk to complete our corridors across our great city, we will seek to buy more, so the message to the people of Brisbane, just wait, this administration under Lord Mayor Adrian Shrinna are looking at more land to purchase across our city, to make this city the most clean and sustainable city in Australia, we will continue to lead the initiatives across Australia, other councils, other cities around this beautiful nation of ours, look at Brisbane City Council to see what we are achieving. Mr Chair, I am absolutely delighted that we are now over our seven hundred and fifty hectares, and would like to thank Lord Mayor Adrian Shrinna for over seventy-five million dollars in investment into our bushland corridor, thank you.
Further speakers? Councillor Johnston.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr Chairman, I rise to speak on, uh, all the items other than those that are seriatum, and I'll, I'll run through, I don't know that I'll get to them all, but, uh, just in case. Uh, firstly, with respect to item A, the purchase of land, uh, at one hundred and four Richie Road, Polara, I thank, uh, councillor Hammond for her insightful comments, um, and her repeated statements today that this LNP administration is more interested in, uh, voting, uh, in supporting the purchase of bushland, uh, that is held privately, um, because that's not been the example that I've seen from councillor Hammond over the past, uh, session of council where she's repeatedly voted against, uh, allowing us to debate the purchase of land at sixty-seven, uh, Chapman Place, Oxley, and, uh, not only that, uh, the DA was approved yesterday subdividing the land, so whilst I am more than happy to see land being bought back at one hundred and four Richie Road, Polara, which, hmm, let me think why this one might be being purchased at this time, hmm, it's in your ward at the moment, isn't it councillor Griffiths, but where's it going to be after the election? Oh, oh, LNP ward maybe? LNP ward, so of course, they're doing exactly, what was the slogan we heard from councillor Adams before? Nothing's changed, nothing's changed, definitely nothing has changed, um, so, um, I just think, I, I, seriously, I thank councillor Hammond for helping, um, lower councillor Burke's vote in Oxley, um, because her comments today, I will absolutely be sending out to those residents, uh, so that they understand that she stands up and says she will protect, uh, bushland that's privately owned, but yet, as the park's chairman votes against it in this place.
Yes.
Uh, seventy Leyd Street, Gaythorn are joining, uh, uh, it's very hard to tell from the map, but I presume this is a really tiny skinny little piece that's next to the area that says Road Reserve, um, what I do note today is there are two items here, and the other one we'll come to, uh, later, um, where the administration is selling off publicly owned land. Now, the really interesting part of that is, week after week after week, they stand up and they criticise the state government about selling off land, I mean councillor Hammond has done it, um, all of this land, I mean, it's just fascinating, isn't it? It's terrible when the state government sells off land, asset sales, asset sales, asset sales, but then, when the LNP sell off land, oh, nothing to see here, it's fine, it's all good, there's no problems. So let me be clear, um, uh, this is a very small parcel of land based on what I can see, um, I don't understand how it came to be separately titled, um, I, it's, it's very odd, there's not a lot of information about this, um, matter, um, and honestly, it, it just, yeah, uh, I don't know, these people. Item C, um, now the Treasury Corporation, so this is our banker telling us they're happy with the amount of record borrowings that we have going, now, I don't think that's anything to be proud of, um, what they say when there's a strong whatever rating or whatever they call it is, that means rates are going up, so they're happy that their revenue stream to pay off the debt, the huge debt that we have, the record debt that this council has, um, is the rates are going up, that is essentially what gives council its strong rating, um, and we know, we know that this LNP administration increases rates every single year, every year I've been here, they've done it, even the year after the floods when people are in distress, rates went up, they go up well above CPI, and of course it is no surprise to me that our banker thinks this is a good thing, this is great, um, they want council to spend more money, they want council to borrow more money, um, that's what they want, so of course they're more than happy, uh, to give us a big tick, uh, this is like, uh, Dracula standing over the head of the blood bank and going, oh, you're doing an excellent job, um, it's not necessarily anything that you can rely on, and certainly when you look beneath the veneer of what they're saying, the reason that they rate councillors being so good is because, um, of rates and rate increases that are forecast out into infinity, um, by this LNP administration, and I can tell you, there is very little return for it out in my ward. Uh, I will move on to the infringement, uh, oh, that's E, I'm sorry, uh, I'll move on to the, uh, lease for community organisations, um, and just say that, uh, there are a number of leases here, uh, for community groups in my ward, um, I am looking forward to council consulting with me, while most of them are straightforward, there are a couple, uh, that we do need to look at very closely, um, I want to see consistency across the board for, uh, our organisations, at the moment there are some groups that get the minimum four years, there are other groups that get ten, so we, we do need consistency, and I remember that debate, we were told that's what was going to happen here four or five years ago, and it, it hasn't, so, we just need to see some consistency in the way these community leases are being, uh, the terms of the community leases, um, we need to make sure that our community groups are not being overcharged, um, increasingly groups are saying to me that council's, uh, financial responsibilities are burdensome, so small community groups are being asked to pay tens of thousands of dollars in maintenance costs, and if you're a small community arts group with a small membership base, that is extremely difficult, and I think that council needs to change the way it goes about undertaking community leases, and it needs to ensure that there is investment into these council facilities, because it is not happening now, and the burden of managing these leases is being put back on largely, um, older volunteer community groups, um, it's not the way that other councils run, um, their community facilities programmes, and our council needs to do more to help, uh, community groups manage those leases. With respect to the powerhouse, I think the powerhouse is a, um, wholly-owned subsidiary of Brisbane City Council, um, uh, certainly I have some concerns about the length of the lease, the powerhouse is a wonderful organisation, um, the streets are paved with gold out there, it's the first time I've been out to powerhouse for a few years, and I could not believe the quality of the facilities, including how sparkling green the grass is around the powerhouse, I mean, everything in my ward is dead, it is dead, there's no grass growing, and they were watering, and there was green grass, and I, I was, that shocked me more than anything out there. Uh, uh, did, let me just have a little bit of a look, um, just briefly on the, uh, superannuation, I am extremely concerned that, uh, we did not, uh, the Lord Mayor did not take up the opportunity to ensure that there was a transparent accountability system for the expenditure of funds under his allowances, uh, he voted against, and the LNP voted against my motion to, um, include reference, uh, to the, uh, review panel to ensure that there was a system of accountability set up, I do not support cash being handed over without scrutiny, in our ward budgets, we must account for every single cent, so it is unreasonable, um, that the Lord Mayor can get a hundred thousand dollars in cash, no questions asked, into his bank account with no accountability, and it must be included in the terms of reference. It also concerns me that, um, it's been flagged the Lord Mayor's going to get a pay rise, uh, in the, uh, remuneration tribunal report, I mean, I could not believe that, I honestly could not believe it, um, it, it's like...
So councillor Johnston, you know, can I just bring you back to the topic?
Yes.
So it's just, it's about, it's specifically about superannuation.
Yes.
Can I just ask you to talk about superannuation for me, please?
And this was in the report, um, that was undertaken, that we were...
I appreciate that, but it's not in this report, you see, so that, that distinction.
Well, it's certainly, uh, referred to here, the terms of reference, um, it, it's certainly all referred to in here in terms of what we're discussing today, so, um, and the Lord Mayor's superannuation, of course, goes up if he gets a pay rise as well, so it is absolutely related to all of this, um, they tried to equate it to the premier of Queensland, now, the Lord Mayor's seven thousand, um, council staff, the premier of Queensland, I mean, I'm sure an LNP council will shout it out for me how many they've got, but I don't know, it's, it's, it's a lot, it's hundreds of thousands to my knowledge, um, but of course, um, Lord Mayor Adrian Shrinna, who's, who's paid, what, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year or something like this, he's not getting enough money, according to the, uh, tribunal, so, um, I would just say that, um, to me, the remuneration tribunal didn't necessarily look at all the things that it should have looked at, um, and I am concerned, uh, that, uh, there is still no accountability system around the use of these, um, allowances, and that they felt that they needed to flag how hard-done-by the Lord Mayor was, I honestly could not believe it, I, I, I mean, did they not understand the purpose of the referral and what the community concerns were, and they think that the Lord Mayor's been hard-done-by financially, uh, it's just, that was just out of touch, in my view, um, so I have some concerns, uh, about that, but obviously, uh, decision's been made, um, you know, I've said all along, uh, since this matter came up, first time I recall it coming up was about two thousand and eleven, we should have all of our salaries and allowances, et cetera, tied to what our staff are paid, I still think that's the right way to go.
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired, further speakers, councillor Maddox.
Uh, thank you, Mr Chair, I rise to speak in regards to items H, I and J, and firstly in regards to the lease arrangement for Carroll Park Swimming, uh, Centre, Mr Chair, as councillors may know in this chamber, in the past, council has, uh, leased this facility, but, uh, which is state-owned, uh, but in the past we've not been able to obtain a proper lease from the state government in, in regards to this facility, so this lease that's before us today is actually a, a huge boon for, uh, the community, because now that we are in this, um, uh, relationship with the state formally under this lease agreement, we can only hope that over time, as council contributes clearly, uh, to this, um, uh, the costs and outlays of the facility, to the, uh, that we can see some improvements within the actual structure and infrastructure of the facility in times to come, but that's a conversation that needs to be had, uh, with the Queensland Government's Department of Education, uh, in future days, but what's most important about this document is that we've now reached an agreement where previously we haven't been able to get support from the department for it. Um, the Carroll Park, since two thousand and one-two, the Carroll Park Swim Centre has been operated on a series of short-term agreements between the Department of Education Council and an operator appointed by council, the current operator, LSE, who, uh, who has operated the facility in a series of annual licences agreements since two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen, so under the current short-term agreement, students of the Carroll Park State School have granted, uh, access to the venue during school-related activities, and the facility is also open to the public during an approximately nine-month swimming season, so, um, by seeking a longer-term lease agreement with the Department of Education, will enable council to provide greater tenure and security to the sub-LSE, and a long-term lease will enable an operator to increase the level of activation at this site, and invest developing long-term programming which will drive an increase in customers and revenue, this will, uh, enable, uh, and, uh, the operator to assume more of the operational cost of the facility, and for council to reduce the annual subsidy payable to the operator, so as part of this, uh, council will also seek, uh, a, a commitment, uh, from the sub-LSE to increasing, um, the opening season of this pool providing further benefit to the community, so it's, um, fantastic that, um, this lease grease, this lease agreement has been put in place, and that a negotiation has been able to achieve with the Department of Education. In regards to item, item I, uh, Mr Chair, it's the lease of council land to community organisations, councillors will know that, uh, we previously came to the chamber in regards to the lease process, uh, and in the last lot of, uh, leases that we brought, we facilitated a new process now, that, that significantly improves the timeframes of, of review and fi- and assessment of the documents, uh, which is to the enormous benefit, uh, of all of our different stakeholders, uh, which are primarily the LSEs and those community organisations, um, we have the files here, uh, and so, um, uh, in regards to, uh, the current, uh, proposed leases, uh, we've identified ninety-one organisations, uh, as existing users of council-owned or controlled assets and wish to progress in accordance with council's standard lease terms and conditions, um, by supporting the application, um, through this process, council will enable, uh, officers to progress with lease negotiations, allowing each of the ninety-one organisations to continue operating at the current premises, delivering important community cultural and sport and recreation activities for the residents of Brisbane, um, and, and of course, to the point made by councillor Johnston previously, relevant local councillors will be informed, um, uh, of council's intention to apply, uh, and, and continue these lease negotiations, and of course, councillors will be consulted in the ordinary course, as they have been under the previous process, uh, as to whether they support, uh, the lease continuation or not, so, uh, this process, Mr Chair, uh, to the credit of the officers in BCLP, uh, has significantly improved that turnaround time and given those clubs and, uh, different groups greater certainty as to performance and, and getting that document back as quickly as possible. Um, I suppose to the next item, which is item J, which is the lease to the Brisbane Powerhouse, um, now, as the Lord Mayor has previously, previously stated, there is a current lease over the facility, uh, by, and as councillor Johnston, uh, said, a, a wholly-owned subsidiary of Brisbane City Council, so, um, the powerhouse requested a longer-term lease to enable security of tenure, uh, but also, uh, specifically for the upgrade of the existing premises on-site, uh, Mr Chair, I have to really, uh, acknowledge the tremendous work, uh, of the CEO, the creative director and the board, uh, in continuing to deliver, uh, high-quality outcomes, uh, for Brisbane residents of a cultural experience in so many diverse ways, but also providing opportunities for emerging artists, uh, in their programmes, the powerhouse actually works very closely with different organisations across the city to assist emerging, uh, production companies and artists to be able to put on their productions, and as part of that, they actually incur the cost themselves, so I heard comments previously, uh, from councillor Cassidy, uh, that, um, you could see Eric Idle and then the next day you could see a community play, you actually still can, in fact, the performance by Eric Idle, uh, was earlier this year, uh, Mr Chair, and, um, nothing has changed, and so his reference to the previous days of, uh, of the formation of the powerhouse by, uh, the then-Lord Mayor Jim Sawley, um, the intent and purpose of the powerhouse has never changed, and, uh, under this administration never will, it is, uh, the people's place, it is a place of making sure that there are enormous creative opportunities for any manner of performance, the, um, the powerhouse has gone above and beyond in, in, in its importance of creating an inclusive place, uh, for different themed festivals, uh, throughout the year through there, it's just a shame, uh, that some councillors obviously don't value the importance of the creative sector to our community, don't value the importance that the powerhouse plays in providing those opportunities for emerging artists and production companies, there are a number of, uh, companies that sit underneath the powerhouse, uh, and are able to, uh, utilise those facilities and have in the past and will continue to do so in the future, by giving the powerhouse, um, this tenure, uh, uh, that they're seeking, uh, it will provide them with enormous opportunities, um, to, uh, continue to upgrade those facilities for the benefit of council and for the benefit of the broader community as well, so what we have here before us is that opportunity to provide the... So what we have here before us is that opportunity to provide the powerhouse with the next stage of looking at the future and providing even greater experiences, not only locally but nationally and internationally. All councils need to do is have a look at the programme that is readily available, either online or hard copy, to see the wide variety of performances that come there. And importantly also, they should go and have a look at it themselves and enjoy this facility, because this is a standout space for Brisbane City Council, for the people of Brisbane. And this lease and the opportunity to provide them this extra tenure, to give them that investment opportunity, will provide even greater opportunities in the future. Thank you.
Further speakers, councillor Strunk.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair. Listen, I'd like to rise and speak on item C and H. Item C, you know, when the Lord Mayor got up and talked about this and said, oh, you know, Labour's going to be against this and all the rest of it, well, we're not against the actual audit itself, right? An audit's an audit. But what supports that endorsement, or my calling it endorsement, is certainly not a ringing endorsement of the credit that this council has been carrying for years and years and years, but it is an endorsement. Now, you know, like other councillors in this chamber, you know, I came from business and I would have loved to have been able to look at my P and L report at the end of the year and say, listen, I've got to put my prices up, and I'm going to put it up by double inflation or 50% above inflation, and be able to do that without really doing much else.
And the customer's got no choice.
Exactly. Listen, we are in a monopoly here. This is a monopoly business, right? Now, it's a legal monopoly business, it's not illegal, but it's a monopoly in itself. The Ray Pairs of Brisbane do not have the choice to move anywhere else easily to another council area, because they probably lived and the kids are going to school here and all the rest of it. So it's not like you can just shop elsewhere, right? And I think, you know, and it's not just the rates that supports this credit review, it's also the fees and charges. And they have been going up well above inflation as well. If we just look at the rates in the suburb of Vanalla, right, it's gone up 20% over the last four years. Now, wouldn't it be great if we were running a business, right, and we were able to do that, put our prices up in four years 20%? I'll tell you what, I'd be going off to general managers' meetings and I'd be crowing and say, how great am I as a manager? But that general manager would say, no, you're not. You're not, you're not really operating your business efficiently. And the Lord Mayor says that he supports small business, but I tell you what, there's not one small business in this city that can do what this council does with rates, charges, and fees. Not one. And I tell you what, the ones that have tried it, they're out of business. So let's not crow too much. Business can't do what you do or what we do as a collective, and so I just want to end my comments there on that particular item. Now, in regards to item H, and this is in regards to the Carroll Park Pool and the extension or the development of a long-term lease or a longest-term lease for that facility, I wholeheartedly endorse what council's doing in this area. I know the contractor there has been doing a terrific job over the last number of years. But they, I'm just surprised that it's taken, you know, all these since 2001 to actually give them a long-term lease. Now, we've had many different changes of government at the state level, right? We had Newman Years as well, so there was every opportunity for that to happen. But it looks like the Palashay Government has decided to engage council or council's engage them in regards to looking at a long-term lease for this facility. It's a terrific facility, it is small, I'll pick up on what my leader said, it is quite small, it only will do a certain amount of people, it is a growing area, we do need more pools, but that's for another debate. So I just end my comments there, and thank you, Mr Chair.
Further speakers, councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I rise to speak on items B and item C. Just to get item B out of the way first, under the City of Brisbane Regulation, council can sell or lease land outside a tender or auction, provided council approves applying an exemption. In the case of this particular piece of land, it is really too small, 126 square metres, to develop the land for any other purpose, and so clearly it makes sense to seek an exemption to sell this site to one of the adjoining landowners. Now, moving on to item C, the QTC credit review. As I've noted in the chamber recently, this is the eighth year in a row that QTC have issued council with a strong, with a neutral outlook credit rating, and I've heard in the chamber that strong with a neutral outlook could be better. Well, I'll tell you what, it's a terrific rating, and I'll take this every day of the week. So to put it into perspective, and the Lord Mayor mentioned it earlier, I'm not aware of any other council in Queensland that has a rating approaching this one. We know that Brisbane residents expect us to be able to responsibly manage the budget while still ensuring we deliver on new initiatives that make the Brisbane of tomorrow even better than the Brisbane of today. This administration is able to deliver on major projects while keeping debt levels manageable. There is a pipeline of important projects that this administration will deliver for the city due to sound financial management. QTC and their credit rating have recognised council's capacity to deliver a large programme of infrastructure projects while still managing our debt levels. In fact, while council has received approval from QTC for new borrowings, council has not actually drawn down new debt since 2017. And this is because we have a strong record of delivering projects within budget, allowing savings to be reinvested into new projects. We have achieved a strong credit rating by consistently showing an operating surplus and demonstrating we have the capacity to pay our forecasted debt. We have achieved a neutral outlook by showing there are no foreseeable financial risks to this administration. However, we do not take this for granted and have a very close focus on council's finances today and in the future. Now, turning to some of the points councillor Cassidy made, he used a phrase that will be loading up with debt in the future. Now, you've only got to have a look at the budget book, loading up on debt in the future. We have an increase in assets and liabilities in the next financial year as a result of accounting standard changes which have been presented in this council. In the next financial year, due to accounting standard changes, we'll have an increase in liabilities of $3 billion and an even greater increase in the assets next year. Then, if you look out across the forwards, there's no explosion in debt, incredibly modest increases, and more importantly, in the forwards, the debt actually reduces. So councillor Cassidy's point about loading up on debt, it's absolute nonsense. Now, turning to councillor Strunk. Got to love this one. Talking about rate increases, you know, we run a monopoly. We run a monopoly. People can't move anywhere else. They wouldn't want to move anywhere else. We've got the cheapest rates in South East Queensland. Why would they go anywhere else? And, exactly right, and we have a fantastic city, we've got the best city in Australia. So why would they go anywhere else? Why would they go somewhere else to pay higher rates? And once again, we'll get back to the inconvenient truth, councillor Strunk wasn't in the chamber when the ALP increased rates by 6%, four times, four times. Your record is not impressive, trust me. So, a fantastic report from QTC. And another one that I'd like to pick up councillor Strunk on, he made a point about rate increases being higher than the rate of inflation. I've mentioned this in the chamber before. The CEO of QTC, no less, has said that is nonsense to link the rate increases in Queensland of any council to CPI. CPI is a basket of goods. The price increases of services and projects that council undertake have no correlation with that. It's very, very different. I would suggest councillor Strunk does a little bit of reading on this and inform himself as to what the key drivers are of cost increases in council. In summary, a great report from QTC, and I'll leave it at that.
Further speakers, councillor Griffiths.
Yes, thank you. Mr Chair, and I rise to speak on item A and item J. Just in relation to item J, that, item A, that's the land at 104 Ritchie Road, Plara. That land is actually in the Blunder Creek catchment for our waterways, and is an important piece of land that is actually zoned environmental management. There's a significant part of this site is environmental land and has been zoned that way. There is a dwelling on-site that obviously will be removed once this land comes over to council. The owners did come and see me a couple of months ago, and they have an issue with hardship in terms of, hardship in terms of what they need to do with, in relation to this land. So I made representations both to the, or to the CEO, and I welcomed the outcome of the purchase of this land. It certainly will be a good addition to that part of it, the city. It is in stark contrast, might I say, but to the massive clearing, land clearing of bushland that council is allowing out in that part of the city. And it's, that clearing of bushland is significant, and it would seem to be against the very, the very mantra that we have, that we are such an environmentally friendly and progressive council in that way. Certainly, if you go out to Plara and those areas, you, people will be shocked by the amount of bushland that has actually been removed and that this administration is allowing to be removed for new homes. Can I say, it's also really, for me, in relation to this whole bushland issue, and I've raised it many times before, is the haphazard way that decisions are made, the way that they seem to favour LMP councillors and LMP wards over other areas of the city. And it was interesting to hear the chairperson and hear the mantra of the LMP saying, well, we're only interested in spending money on bushland. Well, that has just been disproven so many times already. We had the land at 67 Chapman Place-
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Hammond.
Point of order, councillor Hammond.
Noted.
We had the land at 67 Chapman Place, which the previous mayor had written to me and said that, yes, this is suitable for bushland acquisition, and yes, we will be looking at it, and yet this council has just signed off on development for that site. So it's being sliced and diced as we speak, and that land won't come into council ownership as bushland. It will stay in private ownership, and there's no guarantees about that land being maintained properly or even improved, as it would be if it became council bushland. So for one, that shows quite starkly the hypocrisy of the chairperson in saying that we're interested in using bushland funds to buy private land that is threatened by development. It's stark contrast. The second thing is 68 Carrara Street. Once again, this is Upper Mount Cravat, council has paid $6.2 million for this land, and there's no bushland left on it. Council used bushland funds to buy land that had been cleared. It had three nice houses on it, but it had no bushland on it. So, but once again, it fits, or it seems to fit the criteria that it is in an LMP ward. And finally, I just want to raise the point, I was interested to hear councillor Maddox say that the powerhouse is the people's place. It was quite interesting, because I think when councillor Hinchcliffe was working on getting the powerhouse to come over and be an institution that was for creativity and was for the development of the inner city, it was the Liberals who opposed it. And now the Liberals want to have their names all over it. So it's a real asset for our city, it was a way of bringing arts into our city and building the arts community. But can I say, residents out my way who used to have access to that facility now no longer have access to it, in fact, they've been thrown out of it. And I know they've made, those residents have made representations to myself and councillor Adams, and even councillor Adams, who's in administration, hasn't been able to get that group to be looked after. So I find it sad and tragic that we are throwing out local community groups out of the powerhouse to make it a professionally-run area that excludes residents, that actually excludes kids and excludes families and makes it elite. So I think what we're doing with the powerhouse is making it more elite and further away from the residents of Brisbane than actually making it for the residents of Brisbane, ensuring that everyone can use it, not just those who can pay, pay well for the entertainment that's there. So I think that's been a clear shift under this administration, where the administration thinks that the A people who they've really got to look after are the wealthy in this city. Thank you, man.
Oh, Mr Chair. Sorry. Councillor Hammond, you had a misrepresentation. Please limit your comments to the matter at hand.
Yes, I will, Mr Chair. Councillor Griffiths said I was, we're only interested in buying bushland. What I actually said was, we are interested, we are buying privately-owned bushland, not the state government bushland that they want to offload for a quick buy.
Thank you, councillor Hammond. All right, further speakers? Councillor Cook.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I rise to speak on item I, the lease of council land to community organisations. Mr Chair, in my local area, we have a number of community organisations who are the subject of these leases today, and I'm looking forward to being consulted on these leases fully by council officers in the coming weeks. As with all community leases, I want to see our council facilities well utilised, and where possible, that we actively encourage local organisations to consider sublease and casual usage by other community groups where possible. I know in my local area, I still have a number of groups looking for council facilities on waitlists to lease, and I hope that these LSEs in my area will consider any approaches by other organisations who may be looking for space to share. Like councillor Johnston, I also want to see consistency in approach to council leases, as well as greater support provided to our community organisations by council. I've had a number of local community groups who have leased council facilities unfortunately closed over the last few years, and I'm a firm believer that we, as council, need to do more to support our struggling clubs. When I have raised this previously, the Lord Mayor, and I quote, said that I was deluded to think that council could do more to save our local clubs.
Balls clubs.
Correct. My view has not changed. I do think that council can and should do more, not only to invest in our local clubs and facilities, but to support those we know are struggling in hard times. We have this information. We audit our clubs as part of their lease requirements. Yes, they can apply for grants through council to support governance, but it's not enough, and I personally do not want to see any more clubs fail. This must be a priority, Mr Chair, for us as a city. It is our clubs and community organisations that bring us together. And in this item today, we see over 100 clubs and organisations doing amazing work, and I thank them for that. It is our role as council to facilitate and help them do that amazing work in our community. I'm looking forward to continuing to work with the Billaron Community Farm, Camp Hill Community and Sporting Club, Cannon Hill District Neppel Association, and the Mustang Owners Club as part of this latest round of leases to ensure great outcomes, not only for them but for our local community.
Further speakers? They're being done, Lord Mayor. I will now, I will now present items A, B, C, D, F, G, H, I, M, and O for adoption. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
And the contrary, no. The ayes have it. I now put forward items J and K for adoption. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
The contrary, no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by the deputy mayor and councillor Cassidy. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Please ring the bells. That's correct. This is items J and K, the powerhouse, and the contracts and tendering. That's correct. This is items J and K, the powerhouse and the contracts and tendering. Attendants, please close the bars. Clerics, please read the result.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being twenty in favour and six abstentions.
The ayes have it. Please return to your seats. Lord Mayor, can I-
Point of order.
Point of order, um, councillor Johnston.
Uh, yes, Mr Chairman. Uh, I move that the, uh, motion for the purchase of bushland at sixty-seven Chapman Place Oxley, uh, be returned to the table, uh, be returned to council for debate.
Seconded. Thank you. Excuse me a moment. Understand the resolution. Councillors, this is a procedural matter, uh, and therefore, um, I will now put a resolution that, uh, this item is now taken off the table. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
And the contrary, no. Thank you, councillors. Uh, thank you councillors. I'm now, we will do that, uh, immediately. Um, I have, according to my notes, councillor Johnston has already spoken. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Griffiths.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr Chair. Uh, yesterday, Mr Chair, we saw that this council gave permission for the development of the site at sixty-seven Chapman Place at Oxley. It allows for that area of bushland to be divided into three. Uh, two blocks of three hundred and fifty metres squared and one block, uh, that is, that includes the remaining land, that allows for a house, house site of, I believe, three hundred and seventeen metres, uh, to be, um, to be approved. Disappointingly, um, uh, the results, I should say, are very disappointing for residents who have been calling for council to have this land protected as bushland. As I said just in the, uh, previous speech, the land at sixty-seven Chapman Place, I had written to the previous mayor and he, he had written back to me saying that yes, it was worthy of preserving. This is environmental land with significant flora and fauna. It's, uh, also a waterway corridor and that this land would be a good addition to the city and to the bushland of this city. In the years that elapsed between that letter and this current development application, we saw no action. No action by this LMP administration to buy this land. Uh, it's now, this is now the third attempt by the owners of this land to develop the site. So it has been a missed opportunity by this LMP administration, where its own mayor had said that this land was valuable, that now we have seen that it has been allowed to be subdivided and a significant part of the site cleared. Part of the, uh, the requirements, um, for the development of the site and the clearing of the site is that the land won't come over to council. So we miss out on ownership of this land. It will stay in private ownership. And I ask the officers, what guarantee do we have that this bushland will be restored or improved? And there is none. There is none. And the tragedy of this case is that this was land that could have formed a significant corridor uh, that connected Oxley through to the river. And what we as, as a council have done is failed to protect this land. We have failed to use Bus, Bush, uh, the Brisbane Bushland Fund to purchase land that was threatened from development. And we hear time and again from this LMP administration how they are interested in protecting land and protecting land that's under threat of development. And yet this very pocket of land, um, that has been under threat of development numerous times and which we could have done something about, they did nothing about. That's significant, uh, councillor Johnston. It's, I'll take that interjection. It isn't in, uh, LMP ward, it's in a Labour ward, but it is going to be in LMP ward. Strangely enough, um, councillor Burke's ward, if councillor Burke recontests or wins that ward. All I know is that residents are really angry. I, as a representative of the ward, am really angry, and I know councillor Johnston is too, that we have done everything within our power to try and protect this land. And we've put up a legitimate way to fund the protection of this land, and yet this administration has ignored it. And when, when we had the opportunity of debating this earlier on, when the development application was lodged, they took it off the table. So it's, it's both sad and cynical that the LMP in this room obviously didn't want to do anything with this land. They were obviously prepared to let it go and they haven't even, their own criteria that they crow about, their very own criteria that we're using the bushland funds to protect bushland that's from, that's threatened from development, is something that they haven't done in this case. It's a loss for our city. It's a loss for Oxley. It's a lost opportunity. And I condemn this administration for not taking, um, not taking action and protecting this bushland.
Further speakers? Councillor Burke.
Cheers. Thanks very much, uh, Mr Chairman. Just rise and enter debate on the motion that's before us uh, this afternoon. Um, this application was decided, uh, yesterday by the council officers. Uh, it's been under consideration for some period of time. Uh, it has, uh, landed zone for low density residential as well as environmental management zoning on this site, Mr Chairman. The original application was put in by, uh, the applicant, was a one into four subdivision. The approval that council through, uh, the, the assessment process granted the applicant was a one into three subdivision. So we took out a lot as part of the decision-making process. Also as part of that process, the council officers asked the applicant to hand, uh, the remaining portion or the environmental protection parcel of land over to council. The applicant wasn't prepared to do that as part of, uh, the development application process. But what we have just heard is nothing but the biggest load of hogwash in the world, Mr Chairman, and shows that those opposite are driven by nothing but politics when it comes to every single issue that they raise in this place. Because there is no less than four, no less than four development conditions, no less than four development conditions in the approved package, Mr Chairman, that relate to the environmental management zone and its protection. And I'm going to read through them, Mr Chairman, because obviously those on the other side who choose just to play politics, who choose not to actually inform their residents of what's in the act, what's actually in the approved conditions package, need to understand what's there. Because they probably, if they can't read it, I'm happy to read it for them, Mr Chairman. So, there is a statutory environment covenant. This is condition six. Enter into an environmental covenant with the Brisbane City Council pursuant to section ninety-seven A of the Land, Lands Title Act nineteen ninety-four to ensure the appropriate management of the land identified as environmental covenant, environmental protection zone of the approved environment covenant, environment protection zone plan, uh, as outlined in the DA, as amended in red. Submit a plan of survey. Uh, request preparation of covenant maintenance. So, under six B, submit a request for council to prepare the necessary covenant documentation to demonstrate compliance with the requirements of this condition. The covenant must detail responsibilities, liabilities, measures, remedies and intents that are necessary to ensure the management of the identified vegetation and ecological features on the land and must address the following. Maintenance of vegetation and ecological features including retention of vegetation and tree hollows, ongoing weed control, rehabilitation. Now, we just heard from councillor Griffiths, there's no plan apparently to remediate this site. I am reading from the conditions package. Six B dot point one, rehabilitation in accordance with the rehabilitation condition of this approval. Dot point two, maintenance of the fauna movement fences to the perimeter of the property boundaries and a pet exclusion fence to the boundary of the statutory environmental lot. So let's go to the rehabilitation condition, Mr Chairman, because apparently there's no protection. We just said there's no protection, no conditions, according to councillor Griffiths, on how this site is go, how this site is going to be managed going forward. So submit a vegetation management plan. Condition eight A. Submit to the approval of development service a vegetation management plan prepared with, by a suitably qualified and experienced environmental practitioner. And it goes through a number of dot points there about the detail that needs to be in the vi, environmental management plan. Implement and approve, sorry, implement the, um, uh, the plan. Retain and protect vegetation. Clause eight E. Retain and protect vegetation in accordance with the approved vegetation management plan, Mr Chairman, is the next one. Clause nine A, restrictions within the approved environmental protection zone. So this is the clause that actually deals with what they can and can't do during construction and after construction inside the environmental protection zone, Mr Chairman. Like, it's all there. It's all there, uh, Mr Chairman, for people to be able to read. But to councillor Griffith's point, which is, there's no plan to rehabilitate it, there's no plan to restore it, there's no plan to protect it. Clause ten, which is rehabilitation. So rehabilitate the site to compensate for the loss of vegetation due to the approved development in accordance with the requirements of this condition. So there is a detailed list of things. Clause, clause ten A, ten A subset A. Removal of weeds listed under Biosecurity Act twenty fourteen. Infield planting of the following species where gaps are present in, goes on. Planting must be located away from buildings and infrastructure. Clause C, D, appropriate site preparation, mulching, soil preparation, planting methods, stabilisation of exposed soil surfaces. Clause E, the planting must be regularly maintained, including any weed management, replacement of lost stock and watering regimes. Like, it's a detailed conditions package about the management and maintenance of the bulk of the site, the one point six hectares of the site, Mr Chairman, that is forming now the environmental protection zone. This is one of the tightest covenants that council and some of the tightest conditions that council has ever put on a development application in this city to protect this vegeta, protect this vegetation, Mr Chairman. The council officers have done a great job, not only getting one lot taken out of the development, but then putting on to the, putting on to the applicant, who wasn't prepared to part with this land as part of the development application, some of the tightest and most restrictive protections on the vegetation and on the site to protect the fauna and flora on that site, Mr Chairman, for the community to enjoy and for all the residents of Brisbane to enjoy.
Further speakers? They're being done. Councillor Johnston.
Yes, uh, thank you, um, Mr Chairman. I'm extremely disappointed, um, that the LNP administration are not going to vote to support the protection of, uh, remnant, uh, and other bushland at sixty-seven Chapman Place Oxley. Um, we've heard, uh, the Parks Environment Chairman stand up, councillor Hammond, that is, stand up today in this chamber repeatedly, repeatedly, saying that this council wants to buy back bushland that's under threat, um, from development. Well, clearly that's a big fat lie, um, because not only did they vote against, uh, allowing this debate to happen, um, you know, three months ago when we could have done something, they have voted against every single week since allowing this motion to be debated. And now we know why, because they do not want to buy back land that's not in an LMP ward. And it is extremely clear, the Lord Mayor of this city wrote to residents, uh, a few months ago. He's not here. He couldn't even be bothered to stay here for the debate. He wrote to residents and told them all that he would consider this after the, after the DA and he wanted the land for free. Well, Krista Adams got her land, didn't she? Six and a half million dollars worth. Not a tree in sight except the odd palm tree. What happens to actual bushland? Um, this council approves a DA that carves it up, that sees trees removed, that sees impacts on an area mapped within council's high ecological zone. This is wrong. This land has been identified by council officers as should be bought back and the only people who are voting against it today are the LNP. Now, let's look at how delusional councillor Burke is about covenants and, uh, and DA conditions. Um, you know, uh, the DA condition basically says there has to be a plan. That doesn't mean there is actually a plan. It also means that the private landholder has to find the money to maintain the site, which they are not doing now. They clearly don't have the money or the capacity to do now and the site is in disrepair. This is the reason we need council to purchase it so it can be properly, um, maintained, revitalised and form part of a significant bushland corridor that runs across to the Brisbane River. Individual owners do not have the capacity to do that. That's why we buy back at risk bushland. Now, let me be clear about this. The planning chairperson thinks that a covenant will protect the land. Uh, we protected all of the trees on the, uh, old Alan Fletcher Research Site at Sherwood and you know what happened afterwards? The developers kept bumping into the trees, then submitting private requests to council's development team to have those trees removed because the structural integrity of the tree had been damaged. The only resident, the only way residents knew about it was the fact that the trees were being cut down. There's no scrutiny, there's no enforcement, there's no management, there's no funding. This LNP are delusional if they think forcing an owner to maintain their land is going to be done well. It needs to be done by council. It needs to form part of our bushland reserve and that is the very purpose of the bushland levy. And where is our Parks and Environment Chairperson, councillor Hammond, on this? Asleep at the wheel. I don't know how many people have been watching this meeting today, but you would have heard her say multiple times today that they want to purchase bushland that is under threat from development. Clearly not when it's not in an LNP ward. All they want to do is prop up their own marginal LNP members and the rest of us be damned. Every single member of that Oxley community has, for years and years with councillor Griffiths, stood up and fought to have this land protected. Council officers, the Lord Mayor have said previously they would. But whose watch sees this land go? Shrinna and the LNP administration. And who's going to be their local councillor? Just like Dracula in the blood bank again today, the planning chairperson, who's, who's the architect of all of this? It's just disgusting. It is disgusting. The residents of Oxley who have fought so hard to have this land bought back, um, have been cheated by this administration. Cheated by Parks Environment Chairperson who won't stand up and defend them. Cheated by the planning chairperson who's more interested in subdividing bushland for residential housing than protecting its high ecological values. And what do we get? What are the residents going to have to do when this doesn't happen or trees get cut down or things go wrong? They've got to make a complaint to council. Cars will investigate. Um, two and a half years later, we might be in court trying to get them to pay a fine. What should have happened? Council should have used the bushland levy to buy this property back. They have let Oxley residents down, um, particularly this Parks and Environment Chairperson. Who can believe a word she says? Who can believe a word she says? This is not owned by the state government. This is privately owned land that was at risk in our own high, um, high biodiversity, high ecological area that should be protected. And this administration has utterly failed to do so. I just want to say to the Oxley residents, councillor Griffiths has fought for you for such a long period of time and he has had his legs cut out from under him by this LNP administration who are more interested in development, building houses, subdividing bushland and getting rates out of these people and fees out of these people than doing the right thing and protecting this valuable bushland in Oxley. Shame on you.
All right, I'll now put the resolution. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
The contrary, no.
No.
The ayes have it, the noes have it, I should say.
Division.
The noes have it. Uh, who was the second one? It was councillor Cassidy and councillor Griffiths, was it? A division called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Griffiths. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Thank you. Attendants, please close the bars. Clerks, please read the result.
Mr Chair, the noes have it, the voting being seven in favour and eighteen against.
The noes have it, please return to your seats. All right, now councillors, um, as you recall, we have items remaining E, L and N, which have been taken, serial item for debate and vote. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and I rise to speak on items E, L and N. Um, firstly, with item E, the submission focuses on a contract for infringement processing and issuing solution. The delivery of this solution is necessary to make sure that we can help hold the city's safety standards. This contract actually delivers an end-to-end infringement lifecycle management IT system and an outsourced infringement processing services, including mailhouse, call centre and collection activities. The services fully support all of council's required functionality and deliver improvements, most importantly, to our customer service and regulatory efficiencies. So the database consultants Australia is the incumbent for part A infringement issuing group. The incumbent for part B is a ten X and database is acquired the ownerships of ten X in November twenty eighteen. So the new contract is a six percent increase over the current contract price, but that is required to deliver increases in solution availability, solution security, the, the increasing PCI compliance that we're seeing across these solutions, contact service levels, including the financial penalties for poor performance and new integrations and interfaces. This also delivers our parking task force recommendations where we want to see it on an IT cloud-based solution as well. It does enhance the customer service experience by providing enhanced self-service portal for infringement notices, real-time payment and appeals, which currently takes twenty-four hours notice to view, inquire or appeal the infringement, and additional payment channels to provide customers with improved choices and modern payment options as well. So this means we'll get a much more efficiency for our council's city offices in this point as well, with real-time integration, um, with third-party systems, with the issuing applications and backend processing, and a delivery of a platform that is not only friendly and user-friendly, but is also intuitive. And there are so many different variations, as you can imagine, Mr Chair, around these issuing solutions. So it improves the quality, the availability and the security from what we have in the current solution at, at the moment. So DCA have demonstrated a strong track record, they've got a level of experience delivering this in other large councils like, um, Stoddington and Auckland. They will be establishing a local office with two full-time employees, so they have onsite support, free annual refresher training, and they have agreed to be the local suppliers for the delivery of the mail, printing and solicitor services as well. So they're going to work very closely with our customer services and consented, contact centre team to make sure it's a very seamless, um, transition, to make sure that the customer experience is absolutely the highest quality through the whole way through it. Item L is the contract variation for Winham Road Corridor Stage One and Interim One B project. Um, this, obviously, we've spoken about Winham Road Corridor as a key arterial, it has more than fifty-six thousand vehicles per day, approximately three hundred bus movements each day. We are looking at delivering significant safety improvements with this upgrade and travel times for vehicles, including buses, by fifty percent during peak periods. So we know there's been a lot of accidents recorded between January twenty thirteen and December twenty fifteen, seventeen, particularly in that corridor between Latrobe Street and Riding Road, and a hundred and two of those, a hundred and seventeen, a hundred and eighteen, actually required medical treatment or hospitalisation, so not minor dings either. So this corridor was divided into two stages. The existing water, um, main, particularly for stage one, was ending the nearing of its life, end of life, so it's been relocated and the road upgraded. Q U U agreed to fund the water remains, um, replacement, paying seven hundred and fifty thousand with council to oversee the delivery of the upgrades. So we got written confirmation from Q U U in September, formalising the agreement, and I'm advised council issued an invoice to Q U U for a one-off payment of seven hundred thousand dollars with the remaining fifty thousand invoiced on the completion of the work. So this submission actually reflects that there's no change to the overall scope of the project and its completion, and, uh, as soon as this, can we say thank you to the, um, residents for their patience and, uh, short-term pain will be their long-term gain. Uh, item N, the sale of forty-one Turner Road, Kedron, is a fantastic outcome for the local community that we see here. Council has been undertaking a consolidation of the depots at Stafford, which I have spoken on numerous occasions over the last four years in my previous role as finance chair. They're moving to Zilmia and Green Square and for our, um, on-the-ground services, purpose-built facility in Eagle Farm. So they'll start relocating early in twenty twenty, which means the Stafford depot will become unused. We were approached by a consortium of schools, including Padua, Mount Alvernia and Mount Alvernia College, to purchase the site to be converted into sport and rec land, with some buildings proposed to be reutilised, because there's a lot of hardstand there obviously for a depot, and they are looking for extra room for their administration and their classrooms that they can use. And the schools together have got together and thought this would be a great spot not far from where our main campuses are as well. So that is fantastic to see, that this area will become a community hub for the local area with sporting greens and the capacity for schools that are doing such wonderful work in the community as well. The important thing to note is the proceeds from the sale will be reinvested back into the Green Future Fund, which has been established by Team Shriner to fast-track council's investments in parks, sporting fields and green space. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Further speakers? Councillor Cassidy.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Just asking, this, a group that item L, uh, be dealt with serial item, so it'll be E and N together and then L.
Okay, I'll just repeat that back to you, so E and N together and L separately for voting.
Yes, thank you. Um, on item E, the infringement, um, processing and issuing system, um, we've known for a very long time in this place, Chair, that the, um, L N P administration, uh, is completely and utterly addicted to parking fine revenue. Uh, we know that in this year's budget, in the nineteen twenty financial year budget, um, the revenue targets set, uh, by this L N P administration, uh, for our, um, uh, compliance officers to go and raise, uh, is thirty-seven point five million dollars, that is just in one year alone, uh, which is a sixty-five percent increase, um, on the, uh, infringements that were collected, uh, in the last financial year, which was twenty-two point seven million dollars. Um, so that is this administration setting our council officers a target to, uh, raise one hundred thousand dollars a day, one hundred thousand dollars each and every day of the year, um, in fines to meet these targets, uh, and they are getting more and more sophisticated in doing that. Um, we now see, um, specialised vehicles driving around with fisheye, uh, cameras on them. Uh, we know that the pressure this puts on council officers to go out there in the middle of the night.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order to you, Deputy Mayor.
Councillor Cassidy, take a question.
Councillor Cassidy, will you take a question?
Nope.
No, he will not. Councillor Cassidy, please continue.
Um, so we know that the pressure this administration is putting on those hard-working council officers, um, to meet these targets, uh, are causing a few problems, uh, in the Compliance and Regulatory Services Division. You only need to, uh, read about those in the courier mail, Chair. Um, so this solution that is being proposed by the administration, um, looks an awful lot as well, like the bungled IT project, um, the amalgamation of all those different projects and, um, uh, systems into one, and we know, uh, what happened with that project, uh, when councillor Adams was in charge of that. Um, we had, um, twenty-seven million dollars, uh, completely and utterly, um, wasted down the drain with nothing to show for it. Uh, this is a ten-year contract. Um, what we can expect over the next ten years, as we have over the last ten years, there'll be an awful lot of technological changes, um, and we want to know that the implementation, um, of this contract, um, will take all of that into account. Um, that is not clear in the papers provided, um, and there is an awful amount of secrecy when it comes to this expenditure of ratepayer dollars. Um, and, um, we understand why, Chair, that they want to keep a lot of this secret, um, because this is all about finding new ways of not only fining people, whether that be at two AM out at Bracken Ridge, um, or, um, all throughout, um, different hours of the day, using the new fisheye lenses on these, um, special, uh, um, cars, parking fine cars. Uh, this is all about new ways of fining people, uh, and about pursuing people for those fines, uh, and making it more and more difficult for people, um, to challenge those, even when they are incorrectly issued as well. So we have, um, some serious concerns, I think it would, uh, be fair to say, about item E. Uh, item L is the, um, stores board submission for the contract variation for the Winham Road Corridor. Um, this is an item we'll be supporting, it's a project we have, um, supported, and, um, this seems reasonable to us. Um, item N, the sale of forty-one Turner Road, uh, Kedron Chair. Um, this contract, uh, is a little concerning to us. Um, we understand and know that decisions that have been made over, um, successive years, um, that the Stafford depot, along with, um, the Zilmia depot and the shed at, um, Green Square and, um, other assets the council have, won't be needed or required as those depots are consolidated. Um, that raises its, its own concerns. Um, however, in the context of the Stafford depot itself, um, that has meant and led to a situation where council no longer wants to use it for that purpose. Um, for those of us that have depots in their woods, I have the Zilmia depot down at O Calligan Park, I've been, uh, asking council for some time what the future, um, purposes of that site, uh, will be, and have had some answers, um, but I suspect there's an awful lot more information that the community needs to get, um, uh, before any decision is made. Um, and this is the first test when it comes to council's asset sales, um, as a result of, um, the depot consolidation. Um, and the result we see here, uh, I think, is a lack of transparency around, um, what is, what is an asset sale. Um, it's something that the people of Brisbane own, um, it is ratepayer's property in the form, um, of a depot, uh, and it is being sold. For how much, we're not allowed to say. There, there was no, um, tender process, um, the deputy mayor did just confirm that, that a direct approach was made, um, to purchase this property, so there was no open and transparent process entered into, um, where there was consultation with the community about what they, uh, as a broad community, including, including the consortium of the local schools, including, um, whether that would be a consortium of local sporting clubs or, um, local sporting clubs individually, uh, and then more broadly with the broader community as well, about what they, um, would like to see there. Um, and some of those questions that then, um, follow on from that, uh, are whether council could have in fact retained ownership of this and offered it, um, as a lease. Um, I'm sure that, um, the consortium that have approached council, um, are obviously very interested in this land, um, uh, for obvious reasons. They are big and growing schools and, um, want, um, want this land for those sporting purposes as well. There are a number of schools that lease land off council and are responsible for not only their development in terms of the sporting fields and the infrastructure that goes along with them, um, and their ongoing maintenance as well, that lease off council, and that land is then retained in perpetuity, uh, in public hands, um, by the residents, um, of Brisbane. So what, what is the benefit, um, of council selling this land directly, uh, and retaining no ownership of it versus council retaining this land, uh, forever, um, on behalf of the people of Brisbane, um, uh, and leasing it out to community organisations? That, um, proposition has not been put to the community and it has not been put to councillors here tonight, who are being asked, um, to make this decision, and we will never know now what the value proposition is between council retaining this asset in public ownership and council selling this asset. Um, Padua and Mount A are great schools, um, no doubt about that, and, um, of course they would want to, um, have a facility and, and a, um, a piece of land like this close by so they can, um, use it for the benefit, um, of their students. Um, but what about those other sporting clubs in the broader community? Uh, there are, there will be no guarantees going forward that this land will be able to be enjoyed by the broader community, who currently owns the land, um, at the moment, and who won't have a say, uh, in this sale, um, going through. So there needs to be, um, an absolutely open and transparent process when it comes to council offloading these assets, uh, in the interests of openness and transparency. This is a publicly owned piece of land that is being sold, and an enormous amount of the information is commercial in confidence, um, so the public, the community out there will not know what other benefit, um, the broader community could have had, um, had this, um, gone through a more open and transparent process. Um, if you look back, uh, a few years, about five years, um, to council offloading another piece of public land, um, to, uh, a private person down on Nudgy Road, um, the triple C made, um, uh, very specific recommendations to council, that even the perception, even the perception that the process, um, that was gone through was not completely above board, and I'm not suggesting that this one isn't in terms of commercial, a commercial... Uh, I'm not suggesting that there is anything improper about this at all, but the triple C was very clear that when these deals are done without the proper consultation with the community and without all that information being out there, there can be a perception in the community. There can be a perception, and we need to be absolutely above that. Uh, and the information that has been provided, um, uh, to councillors here and from what I can see to the broader community hasn't been complete and full, uh, and there hasn't been a process in which, um, other, um, sporting organisations, community groups, um, or other schools or, or any organisation for that matter, um, are able to, um, put to council what they would like to see on this site. So that does concern, uh, concern me slightly. Um, I will say though, that, um, uh, in terms of an asset sale, which this is, this is the least worst.
Councillor Cassidy, your time has expired.
Move for an extension.
An extension of time has been moved by councillor Cook. Seconded by councillor Strunk. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Contrary, no. Ayes have it.
No, I thank most of the chamber for that. Um, uh, so in terms of an asset sale, this is the least worst, um, this could very well have been sold for unit development, um, or housing development, I get that, being, um, completely, uh, ringed by, um, residential development there. Uh, so it is the least worst, however, there is no escaping the fact that this is an asset sale, and I'm not sure that the broader community, um, have been consulted enough to understand, um, what is actually being done here. Um, this will go through this council tonight, uh, the administration have brought this here, so they're going to vote in favour of that. Uh, so what, what needs to happen going forward are some very, um, strict, um, development conditions, I suppose, uh, in terms of the impact that it's going to have on those neighbouring communities there, uh, the, the benefit that needs to flow to the broader community, um, from this asset sale, uh, and, um, particularly, uh, in, uh, that this has very restricted access through very suburban streets, um, uh, real consideration needs to be given to proper parking, um, onsite here, uh, because we don't want to have a situation like we have with, um, the changes that the L N P made to city plan in terms of parking, uh, and see entire streets, um, in communities forever, um, parked out because you can't go and retrofit these places with adequate parking. Uh, we want to make sure that that is absolutely included, um, and, uh, we will be monitoring this closely.
Further speakers? Councillor McLaughlin. Uh, councillor McLaughlin, yes.
Uh, thank you, Mr Chair. I rise to speak, uh, on item L and, uh, welcome the observations from the leader of the opposition in this place, this will be supported by the opposition. Uh, I agree with him, this is a, a sensible outcome that is being, uh, voted on here tonight. Uh, this is an important project, uh, as the deputy mayor said, for the, uh, Winham Road Corridor project for stages one and one B. Uh, a sensible outcome has been reached here when, uh, Q U U concluded that this was a, a great opportunity for them to, uh, improve the, uh, water main that runs along this corridor. Um, and so as we say, as we see in this item, uh, Q U U has agreed to fund the replacement of that water main, uh, with a contribution of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to council, uh, which increases the net value of the contract. Uh, so it's, it's money in, money out. Um, the works, uh, for the interests of the chamber... The works, for the interests of the chamber, will include removal of 900 metres of existing water main, which was constructed back in 1906, the installation of approximately 1,300 metres of new water main on both north and south sides of Wyndham Road and Litton Road. The installation includes 500 metres of new, larger water main, 355 millimetres on the north side of Litton Road, and 800 metres of smaller diameter, 125 to 180 millimetre water main on the south side of Litton Road. QUU will install three major water main crossings on Litton Road as part of the project, which will be located, which is a benefit absolutely outside the carriageway and in the footpath area. So, Mr Chair, this is a great and significant contribution from QUU, as councillor...
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order, councillor Shree.
Will councillor McLaughlin take a question?
Councillor McLaughlin, will you take a question?
Yep.
He will not.
A significant commitment from QUU. Council normally replaces these assets on a like-for-like basis, so this is a good opportunity to future-proof the future water needs of this area, and will be done as part of the project, but at zero cost to the overall project costs. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Further speakers? Anyone at all? Councillor Shree.
Thanks, Mr Chair, just rise to speak briefly on item L. The question I was going to ask was just to clarify why, like, I accept that maybe this amendment won't add much to the, won't add to the cost of the project, but my understanding is that it will add a little bit to the time and disruption of the project. And I'm just not entirely clear on why this wasn't identified as an opportunity earlier. I'm not saying that council shouldn't take up the opportunity now at this point, but it is a bit of a shame, I think, when projects that are already quite a fair way underway suddenly expanded scope, and then there's more disruption and more impacts upon local residents and small businesses. So I don't offer that as a particularly strong criticism, I was just hoping that councillor McLaughlin might have been able to answer that question and clarify that for me, but I guess now we'll never know. I also just want to again reiterate my concerns about the project as a whole. I'm sure councillors would have been hearing a little bit about the impacts on small businesses along that corridor as a result of this road widening. And it's been really sad to watch hardworking small business owners struggle to get by doing everything they can to make a go of it, and then this council is crushing their hopes and crushing their aspirations by doing such a poor job of consultation, such a poor job of advising people about what's happening, and then pretty much spitting in the faces of these business owners when they dare to suggest compensation or some kind of redress for the negative impacts they've experienced as a result of this diabolical construction project. I've recently asked for another update from councillors about, from council about the redesign of the small public space at the intersection of Heidelberg Street and Litton Road, and I still haven't heard back from that, but it's a little outside the scope of this report, so I won't go into it in detail now, other than to just respectfully ask through you, Chair, again to councillor McLaughlin, can I please get an update from the council offices on that aspect of the project? In particular, the local business, there's a concern that the large bus shelter is going to obstruct views to and from their cafes, and that that's going to have a negative impact on those businesses. So hopefully I'll get a briefing from the council offices in the very near future. I am still trying to work as constructively as I can on discrete elements of the project where I believe there are opportunities for the community. So while I'm opposed to the project as a whole, I've tried to make a point of not being a thorn in the side of every little element of it, and I hope that councillor McLaughlin will be mindful of that, and will be able to encourage those officers to let me have another briefing about that element of the project as soon as possible.
Further speakers? Councillor Hammond.
Thank you, Mr Chair, I rise in support of item N in the report, and to respond to councillor Cassidy's outrageous comments that CCC should be involved at the school, it's obviously he hasn't read the report.
Point of order. Point of order, councillor Cassidy.
Claimed to be misrepresented.
Noted. Councillor Hammond, please continue.
So I refer councillor Cassidy, in case he thinks there is any wrongdoing whatsoever, because he hasn't read the report, to paragraph 223 and 224, where it clearly states how this sale happened with no wrongdoing. I'd also like to correct the record for councillor Cassidy that this has never been consulted to the community. This is false. In the Lutwich neighbourhood plan, this site, since the Lutwich neighbourhood plan, this site was identified and could go to high to medium density at this particular location because of the size and the location of this place in Stafford. The Stafford Depot has been talked about, that it was going on for sale for over nine years, about eight years it's been talked about, that the Stafford Depot would move from this location to a purpose-built location. I support the schools, and have been talking to the schools and working with the schools for over two and a half years regarding the Stafford Depot and their interest on this site. So it hasn't been an overnight decision, the schools, or the consortium, Mount Alvernia or Padua, or the Franciscans on the Hill, as we locals like to call them up there, have been working with council offices because this site has issues. The school is very aware of the issues on this site, and I think one of the questions from councillor Cassidy was, what is the benefit to the local community? Well, the benefit to the local community is green open space at the sporting fields. The benefit to the local community is kids will be active, playing sport on the sporting fields, and community members will be playing sport. The other benefit is, is the wonderful arts, and if you haven't heard the Franciscan rock band, I would suggest you come along to my Lennon May Fair, that's the first week, first sad day of May, to listen to the talent that the Franciscans on the Hill are producing up there. So this land will be turned into classroom for the arts and also for the sports, so green open space. Yes, councillor Cassidy, I share your concern, and this is why I originally brought it up, and I talk about it to the community for the last several years about this site, because the Stafford Road is the problem. There is no plans to fix Stafford Road, it is congested. We know that the state is sitting on different plans, but they won't come out to the community to tell us what we need to do. Stafford Road is a standstill. The reason why I bring up this state government road is because of this site, again, the benefit, trying to get to the benefit of why this is so important to the local community, if this site did go to medium to high density, if this site did, Stafford Road would not cope. And we know that Stafford Road, the state government have no plans to improve it. The benefit, again, to the community, and I can tell you, the school has written out to the community, I've spoken to the community, the community are happy with this outcome. They are happy that the school is taking over and creating more green space on this site. The benefit is, as some of the councillors in this room will know, because they went to school at one of these three schools, will know that the schools are landlocked. The schools are growing, and they are landlocked, they're desperately looking for more land to go. I love the fact that Mount Alvernia and Padua do share classes, so the boys and girls share some of the classes and share their music system. I'm so happy with the outcome of Padua taking over, or the consortium of the Franciscans on the Hill taking over this land, and looking after it. I think councillor Cassidy also referred to strict DA conditions, anything that happens on that site, because it is zoned special purpose, will have to go through an impact assessable development application. That means whatever the school does will have to go through a DA process, an impact assessable DA process, to do what they want to do on this land. Again, green space and the arts is going to be so very important to the local community, and the local community, I can assure you, are happy about the sale of this property to turn into green open space and not high to medium density, when the local state network will not cope with that density on that site. It is a massive site, and I thank Padua and Mount Alvernia and their board, principals and the fathers, for their patience through this very long process. I can't wait to see the site go into the green space and the ovals, and start seeing people being healthy and active. I cannot wait to hear the improvements, the continual improvements from the arts from these three schools up on the hill. Mr Chair, again, I am so happy about this, and I stand by the Franciscans on the hill with their endeavours to improve the local area. Thank you.
Further speakers? Councillor Cook.
Thank you, Mr Chair, I just rise to speak briefly about item L, the Stores Board submission contract variation for the Wyndham Road Corridor, stage one and one B. Mr Chair, my main concerns about this item, we're happy to support the works being undertaken, but specifically in relation to stage one B, the intersection of Bennetts Road and Wyndham Road, where we're having some bus stop rationalisation, bus jump lanes put in, that work has now been going on for the best part of 12 months, and my community was given some assurances that that work would be completed by the end of this year. It now seems that that timeframe has blown out yet again, and I've been receiving a number of concerns from motorists, cyclists, pedestrians and residents regarding those works and the length of time those works have taken. There have been a number of issues, particularly around safety of the bus stop, the temporary bus stop that has been put in there, there have been a number of near misses and accidents at that intersection as well. I've raised these concerns with council officers, I've raised concerns about improving pedestrian and cyclist access through that intersection as well. To be frank with the chamber, those concerns, I've been told, have just simply not been included as part of the project, and therefore no changes are able to be made at this stage. I am interested in receiving a definite timeframe from the chair or from council officers following this meeting, so that I can provide that information to my community, because at this point in time, it is an incredibly difficult intersection to navigate, not only for motorists but also for cyclists and pedestrians, and we need to be provided with some firm timeframes around the scope of these works, and if there is going to be any further delays in the project.
Further speakers? Councillor Maddock.
Thank you, Mr Chair, I rise to speak in regards to item E, and the item there is in regards to the contract for the infringement processing and issuing. And I listened with, always with amusement, at the fictional tale of councillor Cassidy in regards to this contract, and obviously he has not read any of it, and went on a tirade about everything else but what this contract was about, and again, making comments about quotas, and we've had this conversation before, and of course, they'll always push the party line around quotas, but the reality of the situation is that this administration, this council does not set quotas. There is a line item in the budget, and for the, and as an example of how we don't set quotas in the previous year, in comparison to the previous year, Mr Chair, the amount of revenue received was actually significantly less, because this council, this administration is actually focused on safety, and ensuring that we, that people adhere to the road rules, people adhere to the parking signs, so that we can get equity in regards to people being able to find a park, to carry on their normal business, to go to work, to visit local businesses, to address the issue of pick-up and drop-off zones. Every councillor in this chamber knows the challenges that schools face around pick-up and drop-off zones, and how we constantly get requests from school principals for enforcement around those because of those safety issues for children. But what he interestingly did not mention in regards to the issue of quotas, is that his own ALP, Lord Mayor or candidate, when asked the question when he was first announced as the candidate, did, would he intend to set quotas? And he said, yes, that if he was elected, he would set quotas. So the ALP are literally on the public record of stating that they are going to set quotas, Mr Chair. So going on about this administration so far is a complete farce, in regards to what the reality is and what the falsehood is, but of course councillor Cassidy knows that, but continues to, of course, chirp the party line. What this contract will actually do, Mr Chair, because two of the contracts are coming up for expiration, and as is required and is appropriate, the officers have undertaken an evaluation of a tender process, and through that evaluation have come up with a product that will actually streamline the process, and actually provide benefits to residents as well as council, and being able to streamline the process of managing and processing those infringement notices. As part of that process, the new features from this will actually provide an enhanced self-service portal for infringement notice recipients, which means real-time payment and appeals. So currently it takes 24 hours for infringement notice recipients to view, pay, inquire or appeal their infringement. So this new process will actually be, will give them the capacity in real time to be able to do that. There'll also be additional payment channels provided to customers with improved choices and modern payment options. And of course, closer linkages to the contact centre, in order to provide that level of service and response provided to people should they receive an infringement notice. So again, Mr Chair, this is about an enhancement in the service, it's about ensuring that this council continues to prioritise the real purposes of the officers being out there, which is safety and equity in parking spaces. I'm assuming from the words of councillor Cassidy, it said that should any of the schools within his ward request of him to ask the council officers to attend those pick-up and drop-off zones during the pick-up, he won't do it. He won't do it because he doesn't care less about his schools, he doesn't care less about the safety issues of the children at those schools, he's more interested in carrying the party line and ensuring that quotas are met through their Lord Mayor candidate, should he frighteningly be accepted as the next Lord Mayor of Brisbane, but in, but in course, with the businesses within his local precincts, within Sandgate, and whether there are enforcement issues around equity of parking for those businesses, and ensuring that those people can get their fair share of patrons. We were at the Lord Mayor listens at Sandgate, a resident stood up, also a business owner, and spoke about the importance of supporting the local businesses within the community, being able to get more and more customers there. Obviously councillor Cassidy doesn't support the local businesses either, so if people overstay and they come to his ward office and say, please send out the officers to enforce the regulated parking, he won't do it, because he won't support his local businesses either, because he doesn't believe in making sure that there's equity for all people who want to park there. So that, Mr Chair, is obviously the level of, you know, disbelief that you can hear or you can accept in anything councillor Cassidy says within this chamber when it regards to this contract. But this contract is ultimately about ensuring that we deal with those important issues that are expected of us as a council, to ensure we have safety on our streets, ensure we have safety in our pick-up and drop-off zones, and that we have equity in our parking spaces. And again, this administration is focused on delivering for residents of Brisbane, making sure that we always put their interests first, leave the politics and the slander and the misbeliefs to councillor Cassidy and the ALP.
Further speakers? Councillor Johnston.
I rise to speak on items E, L and N. Briefly with respect to item E, I ask it be taken seriateum for voting purposes. I will not be supporting item E. I'll say very clearly, the current arrangements for infringement processing are terrible. I have zero confidence that this administration will improve the situation at all. I'm sure this is all focused about increasing revenue from fines, and I have no trust in this administration. Councillor Adams stood up before and said how wonderful the Parking Task Force was, no it wasn't. There are serious problems with that, those problems are being felt today by residents in my area. This council has botched, absolutely botched, parking in this city, the management of parking in this city, and yes, they go the cheap road and say, well, you don't send out enforcement and you don't want enforcement. Well, of course people do, but they want genuine enforcement, not cars driving by while they're stopped in a lane of traffic, and because it looks like they're parked because no one checked, they get fined. This is what happened to a resident who came to see me yesterday. It's like, he was driving in the city, and he was in a lane of traffic, stopped behind other cars, and the vehicle drove past, and he's been fined. It's just incredible. It's not like he was parked, stopped, not with his vehicle, he was waiting to turn into Edward Street. So there's no trust here, I don't believe this administration will get this right, I fear there is pain and misery ahead for Brisbane residents, and it will all be about revenue raising. With respect to item L, very briefly, I just have some concerns about this, and that's the only reason I've sort of taken it seriateum, largely because I suspect it's how the paper has been written before us today, but the problem here is, why, why was, when was this problem discovered? So what I don't understand is that council and QUU, it implies that the problem was known, but it wasn't included in the original contract, but now they're going to vary the contract. I don't understand what's actually happened here. So to me, the question is, when was this matter discovered? And I just don't understand what the process has been here, there's no dates, there's no information. Again, this administration do whatever they want, they don't really care whether we know what's actually happening and can make an informed decision. There's a real problem... There's a real problem, I think, with the information that's in here. For example, it says in paragraph 194 that QU and council designers identified the existing water main on this project which required relocation was nearing the end of its life. Well, surely they did that before they started on the project? I really don't understand what's happened here. I understand QU are going to pay for this but I also don't understand why it's being done in this way. Obviously there's a bigger project here so again, that's a problem. Now with respect to item N, the sale of 41 Turner Road Kedron to Mount A and Padua. I'm probably the only person in the room who can speak to this issue with any authority having attended Mount Alvernia for school and spent many hot summers' day running around the oval at Padua because Mount A didn't have an oval. I can see why this is an excellent deal for both of the schools and St Anthony's, which is the Catholic primary school there. Obviously the school wants to increase the facilities that it can offer to students and Catholic families in Brisbane and that can only be a good thing for schools and I'm very happy to see that they are, you know, they are going to be the beneficiaries of this. However, I am here as a councillor to ensure that the ratepayers of Brisbane get the best value for money and I have very significant concerns about what's happened, which have only increased with councillor Hammond's commentary on this matter. The first thing I would like to say is councillor Hammond said this has been a very long process. I'm very concerned about that because the report before us today on page 200, paragraph 218, says that on the 12th of November 2019, an unconditional offer from Padua and Mount A was submitted. Now, that's less than a month ago. So what secret discussions were going on before the 12th of November and what was council doing and how long were they doing it? I mean councillor Hammond seems to imply this has been a really long and difficult process and the fathers had been shown great forbearance while this was going on. This paper says that this offer came in three weeks ago, three weeks. Now, there are a number of other concerns. In looking at this, I don't understand why we're not leasing this land, I don't understand why this council is selling off land, once it's gone, it's gone. Sadly, if the school choose to sell down the track, they could sell it and it'll be lost to us. The other thing I really don't understand is why councillor Hammond voted for the Lutwich neighbourhood plan, which was upzoning this site potentially in future, she voted for that but is now saying that was problematic. So I really don't understand what she's talking about here. There is a huge issue around the fact that no tender has been sought, the governance issues around this are hugely problematic. We cannot just sell off 44 hectares of publicly owned land without any proper market soundings. Now, that is improper. The reason that council are given is in paragraph 224, which is on the basis the land will not be ratable after it is sold. So we're selling the land to a large public company and they're not going to pay any rates on the land. So I don't really understand what's going on here. That, the exception that is being used here is extremely troubling, extremely troubling and I'm not sure that it is the appropriate exception or whether an exception should have been granted. The other exception refers to is that council is going to retain a lease to allow this SES to remain on the site. I don't know over how much land the SES is going to have access to, I don't know whether other groups will be able to use this land going forward. I know that's council's intention but once this land is sold, is sold, how on earth is council going to ensure that it will remain open for community and other sporting groups to use? They can't do it. And let me be clear, it is the large private schools, not the Catholic ones usually, but it is the large private schools that do not, do not lease their facilities out to others. I have major ones in my ward and they are exclusively used for their students. So I am worried that councillor Hammond may have sold residents a bit of a puff by promising this wonderful green open space they'll be able to access but there's no guarantee that will be the case. So to me, council should be retaining ownership of this land, we should enter into a lease with Mount A and Padua to allow them to use the land, we can then appropriately condition the lease to ensure that it can be used by multiple users, not just the school for school needs. And that means that the future of this land will be retained in public ownership so that in 50 years or 100 years, the council will still own the site. This is extremely short-sighted way about going, this is an extremely short-sighted way of going about what appears to be a very noble outcome and this is of course because council is rushing and they've not done the proper market soundings, they've not thought about the alternate mechanisms to support the school to achieve the aim here but ensure the land retains in public ownership. So I would just say that I think this council has got this wrong and selling off 44 hectares of council land is not the way to go about it. We should be looking at a lease, we should be conditioning the lease to make sure it is open to other user groups and we should be making sure that this land is retained in public ownership in the long term. I'm concerned about what I've heard today about how all the north side council depots are going. I mean if all council depots are going out of Eagle Farm and you live over in the, you know, the northern suburbs, I can tell you it's going to be a lot worse for you to not have local council officers familiar with your area and the needs of your area who work in the local area to deliver services. So that's also another concern. So I certainly support the idea of working with Mount A and Padua to deliver an outcome for the school but I believe that council has got the mechanism wrong, I don't believe they've done the proper governance and due diligence that is necessary here and I believe that it should be a lease rather than selling the land so that we can ensure that it is properly protected for future generations of Brisbane residents.
Further speakers, councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr Chair, I just rise, just, I speak briefly on item N, 41 Turner Road Kedron. I've got to say, I think it's a rare opportunity and what we get here is a terrific strategic outcome, not only for the schools involved but, but, but for the whole city. And councillor Cassidy and councillor Johnston seem to have this thing in their mind that it should have been leased. That was an option. But the reality is, we get a much better strategic outcome from the sale and more importantly, the money, the proceeds of this sale...
Councillors allow councillor Allen to speak.
The sale will result in some proceeds, those proceeds will go into the Green Future Fund and we will be buying, and we will be buying more green space or sport and recreation space in another location admittedly. But overall, this gives a much better strategic outcome for all parties here. Now to the points he was making about, oh look, you know, it's 44 hectares, it's not, it's 4.4 hectares. So, 4.4 hectares, this sale represents an excellent outcome for all stakeholders, you know, there were valuations done, we're very confident that the price is appropriate for this site. It's going to be terrific, it's going to provide the schools with playing fields, education facilities, it'll provide the community with green space that will be quarantined from future residential development. I know that people in the opposition here come in here regularly and bang on about inappropriate development. This is a great outcome because as councillor Hammond said, this could be residential, it could be clogging Stafford Road. As an alternative, we get a fantastic sport and rec outcome and then the proceeds of this sale will go to yet another fantastic outcome for the people of this city. So a fantastic strategic outcome, a really significant social dividend and something that's totally consistent with the green aspirations of the Swinna administration. Thank you.
Further speakers? There being none. Go councillor Richards.
Mr Chair, I move that council now adjourn for dinner for a period of one hour, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Richard, second by councillor Marks, this council now adjourn for the purpose of dinner for one hour commencing when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
On the contrary, no. The ayes have it.